This conference will now be recorded.
Get going with our meeting here. All times on this agenda are approximate. Considerations may require more or less time than is scheduled. Items on the agenda may be taken out of order. The public body may combine two or more agenda items for consideration, and the public body may remove an item from the agenda or delay discussion relating to an item on the agenda at any time. Public comment is designated for discussion only. The public has the opportunity to address the commission on any matter not appearing on the agenda. However, no action may be taken on any matter raised until the matter itself has been specifically included on the agenda as an item upon which action may be taken. Additionally, public comment may be heard on any item listed on the agenda. Persons are invited to submit comments in writing and/or attend and make comments on any agenda item at the Lander County Commissioners Board Meeting. All public comment may be limited to three minutes per person at the discretion of the commission. Please note that the public body may interrupt the open meeting and exclude the public for the purpose of having an attorney-client discussion of potential and existing litigation which is pursuant to NRS 2410153V2. I'll call this meeting to order. Robert, would you lead some pledge this morning?
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
We'll have a moment of silence. So Lander County Commissioners may break for lunch from 12:00 p.m. to 1:15 p.m. Any agenda item may be taken out of order, may be combined for consideration by the public body, and items may be pulled or removed from the agenda at any time. Commissioners report on meetings, conferences, and seminars attended. Dee, we'll start with you.
Other than rural roundup, I haven't been anywhere.
Okay. Kathy?
Just the TV more and we, it was basics. That's what we didn't have to do anything new.
Okay. JR?
Yeah, I went to the Central Nevada Water Board Meeting last Friday, and they were doing, the state's doing the water buyback water rights. And so far, I've got Pine Valley, they had seven million in the budget to buy water rights, and the state gave them an extra three million, so they bought $10 million worth of water rights back. And then I'll find out what happens in Lander County at the May 3rd on the Humboldt Water Board meeting. I'll report back what we got.
Mike, are you on the phone today?
Can you hear me now?
Yeah, we got you, Mike. Do you have any reports?
No, I don't have nothing to report.
Okay. I attended a Pool Pack Conference in Reno. It was a two-day training and then board meeting. And the biggest thing I wanted to basically relate to everybody was that it was very interesting to see the budget, how it's allocated, how they manage risk. And it just got us, got me looking at their own funds here in Lander County. And I think from that, I think we're going to maybe move forward as far as looking at our finance policy as far as investments and stuff, because I don't think it's been looked at for a long time. And we're in a different place today than we were 20 years ago. 20 years ago, we didn't have any money. Today, we have money. And so anyway, it was, it was a very interesting meeting, and I think spurred that, and I think it's going to be a good thing. So now we'll move into staff reports on meetings, conferences, and seminars attended.
Good morning, Commissioner. I also attended that same, same conference with Pool Pack, and we did have a meeting with Justy, our treasurer, and the investors for Pool Pack so we can look at some of these investment opportunities. So that, we are following up on that, and we'll be back to report to you guys on kind of what they think of what we have and other opportunities we have. The bad news we have for today is that the, our airport contract, Mr. Walt Wardell is going to be done on the 30th due to some, some health issues. So we're taking that back over as we'll run it kind of in-house. The people that are out there working right now are going to continue staying out there working and hopefully come forward with a proposal to take that over and run it for us moving forward. So that's kind of short notice, and you guys will be seeing some bills come through for fuel out here at the airport. And that's because right now, I think we're down to about 1,200 gallons of Jet A and, you know, six to eight hundred gallons of 100 low lead for airplanes. So pretty low when you consider some of these seats. And, you know, the Blackhawks that come in here, we get about twice a month, some of them can take what we have on hand. So we do have fuel on order, and it's, it's coming. Our mosquito and black fly abatement, obviously the river's running a little fast for the black flies, but we are fogging right now and, and putting out these little pellets that go in any standing water that kill the larva of mosquitoes. And as soon as we get the numbers up high enough for a plane flight, we'll be making them. We always notify our beekeepers, let them know what's happening, try to do it after hours to where the bees are already in, in the hives. So just letting everybody know that we are paying attention. We know that it's probably going to be a pretty good year of them. I want to thank JR, he's out there killing crickets for us. As always, that's, it's huge. It keeps them out of town. And if it wasn't for him, I don't think we'd look like Elko did last year with their hospital. So we appreciate that, JR. May, June, and July, we will be offering free sports physicals to any of the high school kids here. Now, the NIAA, I believe, requires all high school athletes to have a sports physical. So the county clinic over there will be offering free physicals for all the high school kids for May, June, and July that are athletes. So we'll put that out there as well. And then the last thing I have here is that the Austin residents, you know, they're signing for the property up there right now. So anybody who hasn't signed, please reach out. You can get ahold of me, get ahold of Aaron Martinez. We can get a time set up to, to get that signed, and we can get that property converted real property. So that's what I have for my report today.
Thank you, Bert. Okay, so we'll move into public comment for non-agenda items only. Is there public comment? Please. Morning, Lenny.
Morning. Lenny Shepherd. I just, see where they bought the ground for the fire hall? And I'm not against having the fire hall, but it said vacant lot. That had to belong to somebody if you bought it. So who did it belong to? Nobody says. Vacant lot? Hmm. That's, that's not being truthful. Unless somebody's name is vacant lot.
All right. Thank you for your comment. Is there any other public comment for non-agenda items? Morning, Shirley.
Morning.
Good morning, Lisa.
Morning. Shirley Shepherd. We're here because we want to put our input in on the truck stop. We were all prepared to go to the planning commission meeting, and at the very end, it was taken off of the agenda. And we, I guess we understand the reason. So we just want to keep voicing our opposition to it. I don't understand for any way how this isn't endangering the children of the community. I, I think that should be a top priority for everybody. And with the truck stop that close to schools, I just, I just think it's a terrible, terrible location for it. There's possibilities of child abduction. And I personally don't even want my child to go to a truck stop for lunch. I don't know why anybody would. And the congestion, yesterday it was just like 11:30, and I was coming into town, and there was some work being done on the overpass by the Department of Transportation. And it was congested on both sides, just because we had to slow down for that truck that was there. So I don't understand how you think when trucks are coming from the Maverick and making that turn, and then people are taking their kids to school, and people are coming out of the mine parking lots, that that isn't going to be the most congested place. It's going to be worse than what the Maverick is, and we cuss that every day. And I have, I have looked into different things, and one of the things that it does is it lowers home value. If you're next to a truck stop, your home value is lowered. And all those people out in La Mer Estates, I, I think that's a terrible thing to do to those property owners, that you are lowering their, their, their values. And I mean, I just believe, if you want to put another truck stop in, which I don't believe we need, why can't it be on the west end of town? We have, we have one in the middle of town. We have one now at Hilltop. If you're going to put one in, and you have to put one in, put it in where it's away from the town and the schools.
Lisa Legarza. I have the same issues, only more so. My business is located on the road that, the plan to put it entrance and exits for trucks. I don't understand that. There's no room. I barely can get, I have to shoot the gap, basically, to get across La Mer Road so I can get to Carson when I go home in the afternoons. From 3:30 to 5:30, it's a nightmare here. There's no turn lanes there. These people own the same parcel that's right behind it, the curbs all the way around this courthouse. And why can't they put the entrance down there? There's turn lanes down there. It would help eliminate the congestion coming off of the overpass. It's a nightmare. Say you had two, if you keep the entrance there going off Old 8A, Marble Road, whatever you want to call it, if you have two trucks stopped waiting to turn there, you're going to start causing problems with the people coming off the off-ramp. Then they're going to start getting backed up into the freeway. We already have the issues with Maverick, like Shirley said. So you're going to have it going both ways. You're going to have that whole overpass covered in trucks, and nobody's going to be able to get anywhere. What if you need emergency services to get to somebody? The kids are going to have to walk over that overpass all day long. It's just not fair to the community. It's not safe for the kids. It's not safe for anybody that has to go anywhere near there to try and get to where they're going. I don't know how I'm going to get to work. If it gets put in right there, I don't know how I'm going to get to work. We can't, we didn't have any say because it got taken off, because I have no idea how a planning commission couldn't figure out that it didn't need to have a special permit once everybody started complaining. But now, suddenly it's gone, and we have no say. I think the commissioners need to get involved before a building permit's issued and figure out other ways. And the other thing, it, it was said it was passed off for NDOT review. NDOT was spoken to. Nope. Because they're putting the entrance on Old 8A, it's, it has nothing to do with them. They don't have any say in it. So I just don't want to get shoved through without maybe you guys doing a little more research on what would be a better option for an entrance and an exit for trucks.
Thank you, Lisa.
Thank you.
Okay. Is there any other public comment for non-agenda items? Okay, bearing none, we will move into our consent agenda. All matters listed under the consent agenda are considered routine and may be acted upon by the Board of County Commissioners with one action without extensive discussion. Any member of the Board or any citizen may request an item be taken from the consent agenda, discussed, and acted upon separately during this meeting. Consent agenda materials are available at the Lander County Clerk's Office for viewing, and copies are available for nominal charge. One, approval of April 25th, 2024 Agenda Notice. Two, approval of March 28th, 2024 Meeting Minutes. Three, approval of April 11th, 2024 Meeting Minutes. Four, approval of payroll change requests. And I believe we didn't receive minutes two, three, or four. So I'll hear a motion.
I'll make a motion that we approve, number one, approval of April 25th, 2024 Agenda Notice.
Okay. Is there a second?
Second.
We have a motion and a second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Okay. We'll move into-
Aye.
Thank you, Mike. I got to remember you're on the phone. Sorry. 1.1, for discussion and possible action to approve/disapprove the payment of bills. So we need to pull check 223-553.
And I'll make a motion to pay the remainder of the bills.
Okay. We have a motion and a second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
And then I'll make a motion.
Aye.
I'll make a motion that we approve 223-553, check number.
So we have a motion and a second to approve 223-553. All in favor, say aye.
Aye. Aye.
Okay, and I abstain as made to my employer. We'll move to 1.2, for discussion and possible action to approve/disapprove inter-local contract between the State of Nevada Division of Public Health, Behavioral Health, DPBH, Community Health Service Programs, and Lander County in the amount of $416.66 per month not to exceed a total contract amount of $10,000. The contract is effective from July 1st, 2023 through June 30th, 2025. This contract is previously approved in the total amount not to exceed $5,000. So this agenda item is requesting the approval of the increased total amount of $10,000. Laken, so my question is, why are we, we've already approved the five, why are we asking for another $5,000?
So the contract is over two fiscal years, and so it didn't make sense to have the five. It should be 10, because it's five.
It's five. Any questions, Commissioner? Any public comment on it?
Real quick, the contract's not the world's greatest, but it's a state contract, so we kind of don't have a choice.
You guys have already approved it. It's just you, they sent it back because it's-
Am I on the wrong track? Yeah. Yeah, but I'm just pointing out, I don't know if I pointed that out before, but we have issues with state contracts, because it's the wrong side of it.
Right. I think we've discussed that before. I think we, we do have, we do have some say in it if we want. I mean, bottom line, we just, we don't have to sign a contract, but thank you for pointing that out. If there's no other discussion, I'll hear a motion.
And I'll make a motion that we approve the inter-local contract between Nevada State Division of Public Health, DPBH, Community Health Service Program in Lander County in the amount of $416.66 per month, not to exceed a total amount of $10,000. The contract is effective from July 1st, 2023 through June 30th, 2025. This contract is, was previously approved in a total amount not to exceed $5,000. So this agenda item is to increase it to $10,000.
Okay, so we have a motion. Is there a second?
Oh, second.
Okay. Motion and second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Okay. Thank you, Mike. We'll move into 1.3, for discussion and possible action to approve/disapprove a grant request from Northern Nevada EMS Consortium and then EMSC in an amount not to exceed $15,000. So my first question is, why are we hearing this now, since we've already had budget and we have a grant process? So why is it coming to us late? Can somebody answer that question?
Do you mind if I talk? Or somebody else?
Yeah, you can state your name for the record.
Okay. Jesse Barr for the record.
Laken Sullivan. Mikey approached me about this, and I told him we could put it in front of you guys for this year. We do only, we still have the $10,000 for miscellaneous that we haven't used, but this is a little bit more than that. So it's up to you guys how much you want to give the grant for.
Okay.
Okay. Jesse Barr for the record. Thanks for having me, Commissioners. I know we have a long agenda. So I'll be brief. There's some information in your packet as well. Paul Ward, the board chair, couldn't be here, so I wanted to make sure somebody was here to present to you. The NEMSC is a nonprofit organization. It helps fire EMS rural health systems and mental health in rural Nevada. So six counties is the main focus of it. It looks to help those in Elko, Lando, Eureka, Humboldt, Pershing, and White Pine. The great thing I think about the NEMSC is it really focuses on those EMS systems, which is, I think, a wide range. It's not just ambulance, it's fire, police, dispatch, pre-hospital services. So it's a range of EMS in rural Nevada who sometimes doesn't have the services, doesn't have the funding, doesn't have the personnel to pull off some of these trainings and things that are needed to keep our professionals at top notch. The other great thing about the NEMSC that we do want to point out, we don't charge for any services. So we want to make sure services or funding is not a barrier to people actually taking some of these classes, some of these trainings, and making sure that we're helping those EMS folks. See, some key objectives, again, I'm not going to read word for word in his proposal here, but a couple of things that they do hit. Emergency medical hardship supports one item, EMS and medical training. They do some patient advocacy for, for folks who are in emergency medical situations. Obviously, the top priority is helping the emergency services, those EMS folks, as well as mental health services. Today, the request in front of you, I want to hit on some key items that it will help fund. Again, this is the first request, I believe, they've asked of you. Again, you don't have to fund the whole thing, whatever I think helps, as many other counties have helped as well, and they're asking additional counties and nonprofits. So the first is the Mental Health Summit Trainings. It brings together local leaders, helps promote mental health issues, helps bring EMS folks together to help with their trainings, and obviously getting them to understand some of the significance in EMS. Also helping those support disenfranchised populations, those who are in financial stress due to emergency medical situations. Overall EMS trainings, including the symposium that is coming up this weekend. So we have some folks from Lander County, as well as all other rural Nevada counties, are coming on Friday and Saturday to Elko for this yearly Rural Nevada EMS Trauma Symposium. Obviously, that is a great thing for folks to get CEUs, getting different training, lectures, innovative topics. They're having some interactive discussion. Really, I think the goal of that is to heighten their competence and produce the positive patient outcomes. A lot of times, our folks in rural Nevada can't make it to big cities, or don't, don't have the funding and the budget to get to those areas. So we, we want to keep this rural symposium going, as well as the Mental Health Summit here in September that all the rural counties come to as well. So that gives you a brief overview of the look at what that is. Eureka County just committed, as well as some other foundations, to help put this event on. Again, it's a free event for all those EMS providers.
Okay, thank you, Jesse.
Yep.
So my position in it is that this board set policy as far as grants are laid out, and, and it's just, I feel that we should stick to our own rules on it, and it should be something that is presented to us during budget hearings. So it would be my decision to deny it, but I'm one person, so if anybody else has any thoughts on it, if there's anybody from the public that would like to speak on it, we'll hear it. How do you guys feel about it?
We need to do comment fraud during budget.
Right. I just, I did, I think if we approve it, it just opens the door for more people to say, well, you did it for this organization. Why can't you do it for ours? And it's just, I think we need to stick to our guns. We have policies for a reason. Anything else to add? Okay. Anybody from the public? Okay, so is there any action? Anybody want to make a motion? Okay. So that would be my suggestion, Jesse, is next year for budget, just make sure you're in front of us during our budget hearing.
Sure. And when do you start that? Typically, January?
It's in March.
Okay.
Yeah, it varies the dates.
Perfect. We'll let them know.
Okay.
Okay, thanks, guys.
Commissioner, can we skip the next two items? I do not see Mr. Morley here. Is Bob, did Bob not come with you?
He did not.
Oh, he did not?
He was unable to.
Okay. So we're good? All right. Well, so we'll move on to 1.4, for discussion and possible action to approve/disapprove the resignation of Robert Morley, previous owner of High Desert Engineering as Lander County Surveyor of Record. So I know Bob has been with us a long time. So is there any discussion on it? I, I would like to, if we can present this plaque to Mr. Tibbison, to give to Bob. He's replacing Bob, I believe. If I'm, if I'm correct, you, Bob is a business?
Oh, I did.
Okay. And I wish Bob could be here. He's, he's a heck of a good man, and has done nothing but solid for the community. So let him know that, that we're thinking of him, hope he enjoys retirement, and really wish he was here to give this to him. We would love to have a picture with him.
Well, thank you. It's very nice. Yeah, on behalf of Mr. Morley, I'm sorry, he couldn't be here today. He wanted to come up with me, but that is a very nice award. I'm sure he'll appreciate that. And just recently, when he was writing his letter of resignation, he did, you know, look back and realize it's been 29 years that he's been acting as county surveyor, and he does appreciate that. And for the record, my name is Bob Tebow, and I'm the new owner of High Desert Engineering, 640 Idaho Street in Elko.
Okay. Thank you, Bob. I think you're out of an exit. Might as well. So do we need a motion to approve the resignation? Okay, so is there a motion?
I'll make a motion when we approve these resignments.
Okay. We have a motion and a second. Did you have a comment?
No.
Okay. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All right. So now we're moving to the next item, 1.5, for discussion and possible action to approve/disapprove the appointment of Bob Tibby Hall?
Tebow.
Tebow, with High Desert Engineering to be the Lander County Surveyor of Record. If yours is, sir.
Well, thank you, Mr. Chairman and Commissioners. Yeah, Bob Tebow, High Desert Engineering, 640 Idaho Street, Elko. My career as a surveyor and civil engineer has been both in the private sector and the public sector. Prior to buying High Desert Engineering, just a few months ago, I was acting as a civil engineer for the city of Elko, where I was reviewing survey maps and performing much of the same duties. I, I hope to be performing for the county. I already have a good working relationship with the city planner, Shelby, as we did both work together at the city of Elko, so I'm sure I'll slide right into this role fairly seamlessly and just have to get familiar with the county-specific process and, and hope to be able to provide this service to your community.
Thank you, Bob. Does Commissioner have any questions for Bob?
Do we have to put this out, or can we just automatically, because it's High Desert Engineering?
No, these, these are professional services, so we don't have to put this out.
Okay.
So no questions? Is the public having questions or comments? Okay, I'll hear a motion.
I'll make a motion that we approve appointment of Bob Fimbol?
Tebow.
Tebow.
It's like T-E-B-O. Just don't look at it when you say it.
With High Desert Engineering for the Lander County Surveyor of Record, Robert Morley and Bob Tebow.
So we have a motion and a second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye. Aye.
Thank you, Mike. Okay, so thank you.
Thank you very much.
Yes. Okay, so we'll move into 1.6, for discussion and possible action to approve/disapprove the resignation of Commissioner Kathy Anchoe from the Lander County Convention and Tourism Board. Kathy, you have anything to say? Okay. So I'll hear a motion if there's no questions.
I'll make a motion that we approve Kathy Anchoe to resign from the Lander County Convention and Tourism Board.
Okay, so we have a motion. Is there a second?
I second it.
Okay, motion and a second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Thank you, Mike. So now we'll move to 1.7, for discussion and possible action to approve/disapprove the appointment of a commissioner to sit on the Lander County Convention and Tourism Board. So who would like to sit on that board?
I will take it.
Okay. So is there a motion?
I'll make a motion that Dee gets to sit on the board.
Okay, so we have a motion for Dee Homing. Is there a second? Okay, motion and a second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye. Aye.
Okay, thanks, Mike. Okay, so now we'll move in. Congratulations, Dee.
Thank you.
So now we'll move into 1.8, for discussion and possible action to approve/disapprove the updated fiscal year 24 FAA AIP Grant Application for Runway 4-22 PAPIS and REEL and Replace Beacon and Tower Project at the Battle Mountain Airport, following the bid. Opening held April 11th, 2024, and authorized the county manager to sign. The FAA funding is in an amount of $608,015, and the local match is $40,534.79. That's an increase from $34,375 previously approved. Good morning.
Good morning, Commissioner. David Meyer, JUB Engineers for the record. So we held our bid opening on April 11th. It was a bid opening. We received one bid. However, it was a, it was a good bid. We got good prices. We were right where our engineers' estimate was, particularly on the PAPIS and REELS. The Beacon and Tower came in a little over, that whole estimate was about $30,000 split between the Beacon itself and the tower. There was also cultural resources survey that the FAA required after project formulation. So those are the two reasons we see the increase in the grant amount in the local match. The funds provided here are, would complete the entire project, both bid schedules and early indications from the FAA is that they will make funds available for the entire project. So.
And then I, we've presented this a number of times, but just real quick as a reminder, your REELS are your flashing lights at the end of the runway. PAPIS are your guidance lights on the side, and Beacon and Tower will replace that existing tower with a tip-down pole. So.
Okay. Well, thank you. Any questions for David? Okay. Any public comment, Hunter? Concerns? Okay, I'll hear a motion.
I'll make a motion that we approve the updated FY 2024 AIP Grant Application for Runway 4-22 PAPIS and REELS and Replace Beacon and Tower Project at the Battle Mountain Airport.
Okay. So we have a motion and a second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Okay. Thank you, David.
Thanks, Commissioner. I would like to take just a second to thank the Clerk's Office, too. They helped me with all of my bid openings and their seamless efforts. So Molly and her staff are great.
Thanks, Molly.
Thank you.
Okay, so now we'll move into 1.9, for consideration, discussion and possible action to introduce by first reading and to possibly set for public hearing, ordinance number 2024-01, an ordinance revealing Lander County Code, Chapter- an ordinance repealing Lander County Code, Chapter 8.45, prohibition of medical marijuana establishments, creating Chapter 5.28 cannabis establishment and Title V, business licenses and regulations moving, reenacting and amending the provisions of Chapter 8.46 recreational and medical marijuana cultivation facilities in Title VIII, health and safety to the new Chapter 5.28 cannabis establishments in Title V, business licenses and regulations to allow and license the operations of medical cannabis establishments, including cultivation facilities, independent testing laboratories, production facilities and dispensers, and adult-use cannabis establishments, including cultivation facilities, independent testing laboratories, production facilities, distributors and retail stores as authorized under chapters 678A through 678D of the Nevada revised statutes, repealing Chapter 8.46 recreation and medical marijuana cultivation facilities and providing other matters related thereto. So, we have this back on the agenda.
Commissioner?
Yes?
Before you get started, I need to make a disclosure to the public and to the board, as I did last time. Being a partner and a owner in a facility that is licensed to do this, I won't be taking any of the discussion, however, my brother will be, and so I will be stepping out and somebody can come and grab me when it's all done.
Okay.
Is that an adequate disclosure, Bill?
Yes. Okay, thank you, Bert. So, I asked for this to be put back on the agenda for the simple fact that it was a prior commission in 2018 that basically approved Forrest to be at this step of the game, so then I asked our DA and Assistant DA to draft up an ordinance, and Mike, you can speak to that, and then we'll be opening it for comments later.
Thank you, Mr. Chair, members of the Commission, Mike McDonald, Chief Deputy Disattorney. Pursuant to the Chair's request for a draft of an ordinance, we put together the ordinance that's attached to the agenda, and it not only added the authorization for independent testing facilities, production or processing facilities, distributors and dispensary of retail stores, but it also updated the ordinances, because there's been some changes in the laws, as well as the regulation of marijuana, or they now refer to cannabis establishments within the state of Nevada. And so, that's why you see some, some changes in references from statutes in Chapter 453A and D that no longer exist, and the 678A through D which replaced them. The regulation of cannabis or marijuana establishments is now governed and regulated by the Cannabis Compliance Board, it used to be Department of Taxation, and so that those references were changed as well. This ordinance does prohibit the cannabis consumption lounges, because it was not included in the request of yours, the Chair, for us to put together a proposed draft. Today, the possible action is to set this matter, today is the first hearing or agenda item on this proposed ordinance, but the action today could be to set this for public hearing, which would be a date set typically by the clerk, probably about a month out to allow for publication in a newspaper that needs to occur at least 10 days before the public hearing, or the board could decide not to set it for public hearing. And so, if the board has any questions, be more than glad to try and answer the questions at this time.
Thanks, all of the Commissioners, any questions?
I have a comment.
Okay.
Okay. It doesn't matter how I feel about it personally, at one of our prior meetings, we discussed the fact that it should go to the vote of the public, and I still feel, no matter what happens, the public should have the right to vote on this before we go ahead and enact any kind of ordinance. This is an election year, it would go fairly fast.
So, I'll put, I'm going to add my two cents to put some clarity to it, so there was some confusion around, there were some statements made that we had put it to the voters to vote on it, but it wasn't what the voters voted on here in Lander County with the state initiative, it was the question, do we make this type of thing legal in the state of Nevada? And it did get shot down in Lander County, but the overall state, it did pass, that's why we're here looking at this today. So, and I'll say, my, my, my position hasn't changed on it, I don't have a dog in the fight, I don't, I don't use marijuana medically or recreationally, but the point is, what we're dealing with is, we're dealing with something that's completely legal. I was put in office to represent the tax base of Lander County, that's what I'm here for, I mean, we could put a multitude of things back to voters to vote on, but then we're not doing necessarily our duty, what we were elected to do. So, I'm not in favor of putting it back, because it's like, then that argument is going to be thrown and waged against us on several things that we move forward on. If somebody doesn't like it, they're going to say, "Put it to vote," and then here we are, putting it to vote, when we have the power of this board to move on. That's my comment. Anybody else?
I will stand by the same thing I did before, that it is illegal, it's legal in the state of Nevada, and especially since it was already voted in by a prior board, that it should move forward. And I'm going to state, because I've heard little chief candidate, I'm doing this for myself, by the time any, and I want to make sure that this is clear, by the time any of this is finished, I will more than likely not be here, and so, I truly do not have a dog in the fight, because this does no good for me, other than, this is the only reason at this point that I'm even able to sit here and speak, is because of the medical medicinal part of it. Other than that, I would not be able to open my mouth or swallow, but, and it is huge for people with seizures, it also helps my epilepsy, but that's an entirely different thing, and so, but regardless, I'm not doing this for me, because it will do me no good, but I'm doing it for the other people, it is legal, and people should, and I've gotten actually quite a few calls about this, for, you know, other people who are sick, have been sick, their, you know, spouses with cancer and other things, however they got my name, and wanted me to make sure that I voiced my opinion for this, because unless you sit in the shoes of being terminal ill, you have no idea, or even epilepsy, epilepsy is not a terminal disease, which I have that as well, until you see somebody have five or six, seven, 10 seizures in front of you, and this is the only drug that happens to stop it, you have no idea. And so, it's not always about the people wanting to get high, because that's definitely not me, and the majority of people that use it medicinally, so, I think since it was already passed by the other board, that we absolutely move forward, and I'm, I will stand by that 150%.
Okay, anybody else?
I'd like to get some facts on the record in regards to how this came up. The other board that approved things did not approve a specific ordinance, that is, they didn't have anything in front of them. All they had was an item on the agenda saying, "Are we in favor of creating such an ordinance?" They then approved it. That was November 27th, I believe, of 2018. The three people that voted for it, two had lost election by resigning amounts.
So, wait, I'm just talking right there, man. If this, if this is legal opinion, I'll let you continue, but if this is your, no, let me finish, let me finish, Counselor. If this is your public comment, or your feelings about this, I'll have you take a seat out there and address this board as public comment. If this is not a legal opinion, I don't want to hear it.
Okay.
Exactly.
I'm just trying to get.
No, you're, what you're doing, once again, the District Attorney is putting your public opinion in.
And if that's fine, if that's what it is, you're going to address this as public comment, not as our District Attorney, who is there to give us legal guidance.
Understood. I just want to make sure you know what.
I think we're quite clear on the facts, I am at least.
As am I.
Well, I would like to nevertheless get a few facts on record, they, they do have to do with the law.
Then you, what's that?
And with, okay, that's what's going to come next, I just mentioned that part, I'll back off on the vote.
You're pointing it as a, as a potential, as a threat to people who are running for office, that it could affect their seat.
No, I'm not going there.
I'm not going to allow that.
I'm not going there at the moment.
You already went there, Bill.
Okay, so, stop. I'm going to, my, my bottom line is, District Attorney, is when this all came up to begin with, in doing your research, I would like to know why you were not aware of this vote that came in, and all of the legwork that you were doing, that you knew, why didn't you bring this up, and that you let it go as far as it did, and that it wasn't brought up by you.
Okay, I will have me to answer that. The other, let me just answer that.
Can, can we take a break? We just lost Austin.
Yeah, so, we'll take, how long a break we need?
I just need to get back to the conference room.
Okay, one second, go ahead. So, where's our, where's our Counselor?
He looks a bit coffee. Can I let you come in?
Okay, moving again, if our Counselor rejoins us and he has a legal opinion, we'll hear it, otherwise, we're going to, I'm going to deal with the board first, we'll give our comments that we have on the issue, and then I'm going to open it up for public comment. So, basically, I go right back to the, when we had the first meeting, I stated some of the reasons why I was for it. So, if we go back to the very, very beginning, I wasn't a proponent for this, I shared a lot of views similar to others, as far as it's a drug, it's a gateway, it's this, it's that, and I don't know if it's just been time, but, but we went ahead and we approved the medical marijuana grows, and we've now have them for, I could be wrong off on the years, I want to say, we've had them now going for four or five years, could be longer. So, basically, we've had these grows, I don't know if they've done much, just because of the other things that go along with that, testing, the other things that we're licensing, we're trying to get pushed to license or pass the ordinance on, there's that. So, I see it, it's an industry, and it's allowing a tax base, and I want to remind everybody, it's completely legal, you know? I drive down the interstate, I see Elko, I see Winnebagoa, I see Pershing, they're all tapping into that tax base. You know, it's like, if we, if we go back and we look at the days of prohibition, right, where basically, the government stepped in and said, "We're not going to allow alcohol." Well, you know what, there were people still making it, and there were people going blind, there were people dying because of it, the Fed stepped back in and said, "You know, we have to regulate this industry," and that's exactly what they did. And we have alcohol here today, for adults to make a choice for themselves, to go and buy a six-pack, a 12-pack, or whatever it is, and this is exactly what we're dealing with here. We're dealing with the ability of an adult to make a choice for themselves. That's one. Two is, we're looking at the safety factor, I talked to a couple deputies over here, and just wanted to know, it's like, you know, how much marijuana do you see, if you seize it, are there any issues with it? Well, I was informed by one of them that a very high percentage, I want to say like 90%, is laced with fentanyl. We've already lost youth in our community because of fentanyl, you know? Then there's the aspect of, of people that grow, they grow, what are they using? Are they using chemicals that might not be safe for human consumption? When you have a licensed facility, all those things are checked off. You can assure that you're buying a safe product, whether it's to smoke, it's a gummy, for medicinal purposes, or whatever it is. It's, I just don't see, I just, I think there's some argument here, or things, people are against it, because number one, the stigma that's around it, and two, personally, because I think of the, the last name of the individual who has the license for it, and it's like, that's what we're here today, is to hear it as a board, and we're going to hear both sides, and that's why I don't want any mental shaping from another elected official on the matter, outside of the legal opinion. But anyway, that, that is my opinion, that is my stance on it, and I'll open it up for other Commissioners, to share anything, or state where they're at on it, or any questions.
I might state the same opinion, I think that it's, the people who have the licenses have the licenses, they receive those licenses legally. It was voted on and passed by the state, then it was voted on and passed by this county, unbeknownst to any of us up here at the time, and so, I think that we move forward with something that's already, instead of continually to try to reinvent the reel, or the scare factor of what's behind this, which is, you know, that it's a gateway drug, I'm sorry to the people who feel that, I truly do, but I, that's just, that's not, that's not correct. That, no different than beer is a gateway to, to vodka, I just do not, there's more alcohol in the houses, children, than, you know, it just, it's, it's, there's not a sure-fall fit for everything, you legalize it and try to maintain it, and the best that you can, and there are lots of marijuana coming through that are, that is laced with fentanyl, and it's, that is very, very scary, and I would rather have it legalized. And I do want to say, from all the fighting and the phone calls that I receive, that if, you know, if it had another person's name on the license, then people would not be in such of a poor, I don't care whose name is on the license at any point in time, they received it legally, that's, it is what it is, everything was done through the courts and legally, and that's all I have to say.
Okay, any other Commissioner have anything to say?
I just want to add to my comment. Again, I have nothing against the name, we've been friends with this family forever, and we all grew up together, so, the problem, the only question I had was that, at one point in time, we had talked about putting it to vote, and there have been a lot of people that have called me and asked me about, "What are we going to do about it? Are we going to put it to vote?" I personally have nothing against it, I think it could be a benefit from the county, and I think that we could take that money, the funding from it, and use it in some very constructive ways to help the county. But, again, like I said, I've had so many people ask me, call me and ask me about whether we're actually going to go ahead and follow on through with it, or if we're going to put it to vote, and I'm just bringing that up, because it is something that we did discuss at a prior meeting.
So, I understand that. My reply to that, I've received calls as well, but I can tell you the pros weigh outnumber the, the against on the matter. So, then, we're relieving those people who put us in office to make these types of decisions by saying, "Hey, we want to put it back." It's just, that's, I'm just, that's just my response to that. JR, JR?
I've got a couple things to say. There's, it's already everywhere around here, and you can buy it pretty much anywhere you want to go. It would be better if you could buy it that you know is going to be clean and, and do what you need to do with it, but I don't really have a dog in the fight, because I don't use it, or, but I'm not against people that do, I've got a lot of kids that grew up with, that use it all, been using it for years, but if it saves one life, having clean stuff on the market, that people can buy, instead of crap that's laced with fentanyl or whatever, I think it'd be worthwhile to have it available to the people that's going to use it anyway. At least they could buy some clean stuff that's regulated, like, just like alcohol.
Okay.
Still, would like just to put a couple things on record.
Hold on, hold on a second, Bill, I'm not, I'm not taking comment yet, I have a, we're dealing with Commissioners. Commissioner, talk on the line, do you have a comment or questions?
Yes, so, I'm kind of in the same belief as Dee, because we did discuss it, and I did get cut off towards the end of the discussion. So, if we go with this first reading, is this it, or is there still, I, I got cut off about the, in 30 days to have a public hearing, or a public meeting. Can, are we still thinking that could be set, to have that versus put it on? Can, are we still thinking that could be set, to have that versus put it on, on the ballot, versus do with the feedback yet, and then do it, or, and proceed with this? Or is this just, yes, over, done with, it's approved?
First off, what, can somebody relay what that, what he said, I can hear.
It would go to a public hearing, that, as you heard. So, this is, basically, it takes two readings of an ordinance to get it passed. This is the first reading, and at the public hearing, which would be, again, about 30 days down the road, give or take, depending on what the clerk's office can, can do. Then it would be either passed or rejected. So, it has to pass both this time, and it would have to pass then. The issue of putting it to a vote would be separate, and would need a separate agenda item.
But we, we could act off of what we get in public comment. We would have, I mean, we're still, the same, just it's choice to attend or not.
Public comment? You mean, public hearing?
No, it's a public hearing versus waiting to put it on a ballot.
Um, no, you can have, we could have that public hearing, and you could separately have either, like, at any time. It's a completely separate issue whether or not to put it on the ballot. You could pass the ordinance and still put it on the ballot. You could not pass the ordinance and put it on the ballot. Or you could not pass the ordinance and not put it on the ballot. You have all of those choices still available to you.
Okay, thank you for the clarification, that's all I have.
Okay, thank you, Mike. Bill?
Okay. Kathy asked a question about why we didn't bring anything up. There are two reasons for that. The first primary one is, I'm sorry if I don't pay attention to things that are more than one term back. I don't know anybody that does, one full term. This happened in Ted's previous term, this did not happen in his last term. Okay, so I don't think I'm responsible for knowing everything that occurred, just as if it came back, you know, eight or 10 years, I wouldn't necessarily know what happened. So, without somebody bringing it to my attention, I would not know that. As to why he didn't act on it, there is a rule of equity, that the law does not require the doing of a useless thing. And, I'm sorry, what I said earlier about who it was, and who opposed it at that time, made it look pretty useless to go forward with anything, and I suppose that he didn't. That's just a guess. But I would not be in a hurry to go forward with a complicated ordinance if, if I knew the facts that were in existence at that time. I would wait until a commissioner asked me to do it. Apparently, no, no commissioner asked him, or at least that would be my guess, 'cause it does not appear on later agenda items in the next few weeks after that. The only other thing I wanted to point out, Mike did a great job on drafting this ordinance. It's updated, and all of that. There is one thing, it goes not 100%, and it's legitimate that it doesn't go 100% with what was proposed. What was proposed at that meeting was completely open, which would have included lounges. Our chairman indicated to Mike that, correct me if I'm wrong, Brian, that you thought that lounges would be a bad idea.
I did.
And so, when Mike drafted it, he did not put the lounges in. Okay, that's legitimate, we draft ordinances for commissioners and other elected officials when they want them. And we usually do it how they want them on other issues. That, that was all I was going to add, in addition to, you know, what the vote was, as to who voted. But you can check the minutes if you wanna know who did it, it was November 27th, I believe, 2018.
Okay, thank you, Bill. Mike, did you have something to add?
No, I, I didn't have anything at this time.
Okay, all right, thank you. So now, I'm going to, I'm going to open it up for public comment, let's just make sure we're just showing hands. Go ahead, Joey, and then I'll, I'll recognize you, please, when you come up front, state your name for the record, and we'll try to keep it as simple as possible. So, Joey, you have the floor.
Joey Ramos, as they pronounce here, when you live where there are Mexicans, it's Ramos. Okay. I got, I got a couple things I'd like to give you guys, if you don't mind, by approaching, give you a couple things.
Yes.
Just because, these are some things I wanna talk about. And I think that they come from, uh...
Thank you.
They come from, and yours, actually, you talked about fentanyl being laced and stuff, there's that. You guys wanna pass it to me?
Do you want to try and get copies of that to chat, Mr. Trump?
We can, if you...
Mike, do you want us to try and email you copies of what Mr. Ramos just handed out?
Um, I, I can get it, I'm back tomorrow.
Okay, we'll just put some in your box.
I apologize.
Oh, or to Austin.
So...
I'll be Austin.
Can I get your...
Oh, I'm sorry, yeah, actually. Sorry about that. The reason I gave, uh, so commissioners, the reason I gave you this outline is because today, I'm gonna ask you for a unanimous vote to approve this, and these are the reasons why. And in coming up with these reasons, what I did was, I actually called Mr. Schaefer. I've spoken with Commissioner Hellman, I've spoken with Commissioner Ancho, I've spoken with your EMS director. I tried to get Mr. Unger, could not get him for one reason or another. And through that, and the reason I did that, is because, remember, I am a member of the society. I grew up here, graduated from Austin, have property, both there and here in Battle Mountain. And I care deeply about this, and I'm not, despite what it appears my, my last name has to do with things, I'm not here to make my last name any worse, if it comes to that. So I wanna make sure I wasn't pressing forward with something that was crazy out here. It certainly doesn't appear to be crazy across the rest of the United States, and I didn't want it to be crazy here in Battle Mountain, Nevada, either. And so I called around and I asked for concerns, because if there's a legitimate concern, I wanna address it. And if there's, and I wanna admit it, a fact is a fact. If there's a concern, I want, I wanna just say, "Hey, I'm concerned about that, too." And if there's not, and if there's an answer to it, I wanted to share that with you, as I asked for your unanimous support of this. These are the concerns that, that I found. And if you'll give me just a second, I'd like to just touch on them, and there's about eight of them here, I think we can do it pretty quickly. A possible concern is marijuana being readily available, here. Well, there's no problem finding marijuana in this community. There's no problem finding opiates in this community. Your own opiate survey you did of Lander County showed close to 60% of residents were concerned about opiate abuse. The marijuana has been everywhere, and is it because they can run to Winamaka, or they can run to Elko, or they can run to a local tribe? I don't know. Or is it also because here locally, what's happened, is people have asked the sheriff, from my understanding, and talking with the community, 'cause that's when I did my research on this, what was the standards for growing? I wanted to ask Mr. Unger himself directly, but I'll see him here, hopefully he's here, that his position was, "As long as you keep it under 99 plants." "As long as you keep it under 99 plants." Now, I expressed to you guys before, that an average plant is about three pounds. That's 1,362 grams of marijuana in a plant. If you're allowed to have six to 12 plants at your house, not the 99 that circulate in this community, but six to 12 plants in your house, you have six years' worth of marijuana from a single crop. What's happening with the six years' worth of marijuana, being grown by people in their backyards, or in their basements, or in their garages, here in this community right now, what's happening to it? Are they smoking it? I don't think so. And you wonder why it's readily available. Now, here's the difference between them and us. Remember, we owned a grow dispensary out here, that grew 700 pounds this last year, that had to fight to get it tested all the way in another city, they had to ship it somewhere else to try to sell it. "Oh, by the way, we did, and they haven't paid us yet." Now we're chasing them down to get paid. We had to go through that, well, the guy in his garage here, being sanctioned or approved, or not pursued legally for his 99 plants? He's just growing away, putting it out in the community. One of the things I handed you guys was warning, marijuana laced fentanyl. That's a public document out there, you can find these all over the internet. It's everywhere. These people won't have to face that. If they sell it illegally and it's laced by somebody else, they don't have to face that. We do, we have food-grade labeling on everything we have to do. Nobody else does. So when you say marijuana readily available, there's no problem getting it. The difference is, is that what we have has been legally tested and put through some rigmarole of shipping, and fighting, and testing. But we, but, but we would hurt the community, I guess that would be the argument, I don't see that. The second thing I heard from people was, "Can you get it?" "Well, I wanna get it locally." Commissioner Ancho expressed in the last meeting, she has to drive to another city to get it. Is that right? I don't think so. Because if the person wants to do it illegally, he doesn't have to drive to another community. Why does she? 'Cause she chooses to be legal. I, I, I don't get that. So here, you know, if you, if you wanna do without a dispensary, you're good to go. You know, it just doesn't make sense. Marijuana being grown by your next-door neighbor. The law right now says that if there's no marijuana dispensary within 25 miles of you, you can grow. Six plants per person, 12 per household, that's why I came up with those six years' worth of numbers, if you do the math out. If there's a dispensary here, you no longer have to worry about your neighbor growing. You don't have to worry about it. And what does that bring in? Who's coming in there to buy it? What about, what about those smells that we deal with, that we're, we're out in the middle of nowhere for, because of those smells? What happens when the next person comes into this meeting and says, "My neighbor's growing it, and it's smelling up my neighborhood"? You know, he doesn't have to face what we have to face. There's a difference for you. Here, here's another thing, health and safety issues, well, we beat that one to death. I mean, just, it's laced, it's crazy, our testing goes through molds, toxins, you know, everybody uses bug killer on these plants, because they get infested with aphids and all kinds of stuff. Bugs are always a problem. We're tested for what we use on the plants. But not those who are growing in their garage legally. They're growing six plants legally, per person, 12 per household. Are they tested for bug killer? Are they tested for molds? No, we are, and that's what's in this community. So, your vote to support this is not a vote to jump on board with a dogma of past memories or past opinions. Look, I don't use marijuana either. I have that same opinion in that regard, I just don't use it. And I'll drink my scotch at night, but I don't use marijuana. It's, it's inappropriate to call this a health and safety measure, and then keep a dispensary out. In fact, I talked to Steve Gilbert, as part of my investigation for coming to this meeting, who is the Senior Director of the Cannabis Compliance Board for Nevada. And I said to him, I said, "You know, I'm gonna talk to the commission about bringing a store in there." What do you think the big, biggest deal is? He said, "Health and safety. Dispensaries should be everywhere, because it's health and safety." That was his big thing. So as commissioners, if you're gonna vote against this, you're voting against the health and safety of this community. And there is no doubt about that, and that's not dogma. And that's out there, and that's common sense. The drug dealing culture, that's on the bottom.
I'm gonna, I'm gonna address that drug dealing culture, so, friend, in my discussion with Joey, one of the issues was, I have a neighbor who grows it, and they don't just grow it for themselves, they sell it. And I was, and the reason I know is, the, for one, the traffic, the foot traffic in and out of their home, back and forth, is unbelievable. She was at the store one day with her two little kids, now mind you, little kids, they're smoking it all the time, because you can't be outside of my friend's house without the smoke rolling out. But she's, well, fine, I don't care about smoking, though, how your little kids, they normally test, if you don't correct me, they test hot normally for the ti, the marijuana. But I had her in line at, at the grocery store, she whipped out of her pocket, I don't even know how many twenties and hundred-dollar bills that, um, I, in cash. And so, I mean, I know I'm not, you know, I worked at the sheriff's office long enough. Not only that, prior to this law going in, and them having that grow, she didn't, and I'm not trying to be rude, had a pocket pissing on the window to throw it out, and there's these wads of all this money. And I'm at that, my friend's house, quite often. And like I said, I could sit there, and two-thirds of the people I know going in and out is that residence, and they're growing it in their backyard, and it's, it's unbelievable. I don't know if I ever would've thought I would see anything like that in my lifetime. And so, it's not, not all the people who grow it, and, 'cause I wanna make sure, not all the people who grow it sell it, and I believe that. But yes, there are the ones who do profit, absolutely profit off of it. Not only that, I'm not going to buy anything off the street, ever, 'cause anything I use is topical, 'cause I'm not a smoker, I don't like to get high. And there's been people that have said, "Oh, I have oil," "There is no way in God's green earth would I ever put anything on my skin that has been homegrown, because you don't exact, you do not know what toxins, what sprays, whatever." And, and so, and in that, that comment that I have to go, um, you know, although, the patches that I use on my, for my, to control my issues, you can't even get anymore, because they're not profitable. Because they're medicinal, and because they don't get you high, the stores, you have to work with a specific store to get them, because if not, they will not purchase them for you. If you're not there in their community, they won't purchase them. I called all over, every store in, from Las Vegas, to the entire, the whole state, and nobody would carry, carries. And if they do, they're 25 or 30 dollars a patch, where they're normally 11. It's, it's absolutely ridiculous. So is it, does it help to have someone that you reach out to in your own town, that will help you, that gives, that cares about you? Absolutely. Because it is, like I said, my, my symptoms are worse, because I can't buy the patches, because nobody will carry them. And, or I could go to Oregon and buy them and bring them back illegal, which I refuse to do. Or I could go Colorado, buy them illegally and come back, which I refuse to do. So I just suffer with slobbering and those kind of things. So no, I can't just drive to either end, to Winamaka or Elko, to get the things that do. I can just stick on my ear where I can speak and not slobber, and, you know. So, no, it's not just that easy, I could just go to Winamaka or Elko, because they don't carry them. Unless somebody wants to pay a thousand dollars at a time to buy that many patches, because it's not worth their money. So, people need to know, it's just not that easy, and it's, it's just absolutely not, so, I'm sorry.
No, thanks, Commissioner, and the struggle that the people go through that wanna do it legally, I mean, we think what you said just reinforces the fact that the struggle, the people, the... The struggle here is not for those who wanna do it illegally, and that's not fair. The struggle is for those who wanna be legal. And I, I don't get that. When it gets to legality, and I wanna, I wanna speak directly to Mr. Schaefer, 'cause he also expressed to me, my conversation with him, he's not for this, it's his personal opinions, okay? He's, he's of the old school. I get it, I think everybody's entitled to be that way, I respect that. When I asked Mr. Schaefer, "How many people have you prosecuted for marijuana?" He struggled, he hemmed, he hawed, and then you know what he said? There's no teeth here in prosecuting people who do drugs illegally. There's a drug court where they cycle into, they get released on their own recognizance, and they get back out, and we get them, and they get cycled into, and they get back out, and nobody does anything. One case I probably could've prosecuted, there wasn't enough evidence to prosecute. No, we don't. So, I asked for your yes vote on this, 'cause if you wanna vote about something meaningful, Dean Hellman, Commissioner Hellman, Commissioner Schop, who are going to, I think, from what I've heard today, that might be against us, why don't you vote to put some teeth, so that your DA can go kick some ass? Why don't you do that? Because if, I think if, if he gets up here and speaks publicly, ask him, "Who, who are we prosecuting? What are we doing in this community to get rid of drugs? What are we doing?" Ask, ask your sheriff, who they're, according to Commissioner, or DA Schaefer, he says, "The police are just kinda tired of this, it's just, it just doesn't get anywhere." Well, why don't we do something meaningful here, and have, and put some stuff on this agenda where we can go, where we can go get some people? And that's one thing that this does, that's another benefit on here, prosecute some drug dealers. You wanna know why? Because every bit of marijuana that comes out of a store, is not only trapped on the label and in the bottle, in the jar, it's trapped in the store. And in Colorado, they call the stores up, and they say, "Hey, did Mr. Bill Williams come in there and buy an ounce of marijuana today? He's telling us he did." "No, he did not." "We've got it right here in our records." "Oh, really?" "Well, he's got it one of your packages." "Oh, really?" Prosecute his ass. He's lying, he took his marijuana and he put it in something to try to get by, like he was legal. It's illegal marijuana, it's trapped in the system, it's like, it goes out in a sealed bag, you can't tell what it's, what's in it? It's not visible, and it's trackable. Now, if your DA won't prosecute it, or if your sheriffs can allow people to grow 99 plants, go after them. Get them out of here, get somebody in who cares about this community. What do I mean by care about the community? That's the other thing here, the opioid epidemic. That's the other thing here. The opioid epidemic. You've heard about the fentanyl. I've handed you something that's public knowledge here about fentanyl. You know it. It's hit this community already. Your opiate survey said 60% of people are concerned with it. Well, guess what the medical literature shows? The medical literature shows that when marijuana was legalized, you know who it hurt the most? Pfizer, Johnson &amp; Johnson, everybody's selling opiates. You want to know why? 72,000 less pills per day used, per day. 72,000 less opiate pills used per day when marijuana was made legal. You want the literature on it, I'll provide it for you. You care about this community? You care about the opioid epidemic? Maybe it won't work. But I tell you what, it can't hurt. There's nothing that shows that it can hurt. That's caring. That's why I'm asking for your yes vote. Last thing is just, I think that, I'm sure there's going to be a whole bunch of people get up here and follow me, that, you know, more people are going to start using. Well, ask them this when they say that. If there's a store here, are you going to start using? Ask Lenny Shepherd that. Ask them, yeah, I know Lenny's going to get up here. I tell you, Shepherd's will be the first one up here. Ask them they're going to start using when this is legalized. I want to know who's going to change their habits because there's a store here. The answer's nobody. Period. That's one of the things you're going to hear. The other thing you're going to hear is it's a gateway drug. Well, you got your gateway. You already got it. This place is full of it. The gate's wide open. There is no gate. Affect what the gate's been open, affect the opioid epidemic. And the last thing is, I'm old school. That's what you're going to hear, I'm old school. To you who say you're old school, I respect you. I'm old school too. I grew up in Austin, Nevada. I respect that perspective. You know, some people just aren't going to change. My own dad would be here speaking against me today, you know? That's okay. Doesn't mean it's the right thing to do. So if you vote against this today, if your commissioner votes against this, Commissioner Homing, Commissioner Chopp, I want to be, I want to be remembered. I want to be remembered that you voted against it. There's been some talk about threatening of office seats and all this other stuff. And I'm not threatening office seats, but I want it to be remembered that you voted against it because I don't want it to be for personal reasons. I know we've always gotten along. I've always considered you guys dear friends. I also know that when my brother went to Battle Mountain, it wasn't good for you guys for a while with my brother. I know that. I hope your no vote today, if it's a no vote, is not because of my brother's name when he was in Austin with your husband in the county. I hope that. Commissioner Chopp, I know he was on the school board when my brother's wife had an issue with the whole school board. I know that he ran in office because, not because my brother told me, but because one of my sisters told me. When he ran for office, it was to get my brother the hell out of being county manager. Commissioner Chopp, if you vote against this, I hope it's not for your personal reasons. I hope it's because you don't care about the health and safety of Land O'County. If that's your no vote. And for the rest of you, if you do support it, as you've already said, I hope that you look at this sheet. I hope that if there's something that I've missed in my own review of it, that you pointed out today to the citizens, and if there's something that's true, I'll admit it. And so, thank you for your time.
I have a question for you, Jerry. So on the fentanyl issue, because I was curious, and I just started doing some of my own research online and asking around, but I was like, why are they lacing this stuff with fentanyl, right? It's like, that's, that's like, that's like evil, right? So then what I found out was that with marijuana being legalized, it brought the profits down of the drug, right? So the dealers weren't making as much money. So
Dealers hate this.
They needed a solution, and that was to lace it with fentanyl because it's cheap and it is powerful. And that's why you put a little bit too much on, you hit the stuff, you could be meeting your maker. Is that a true statement?
You hit it right on the head. So, you know, the drug dealers, they're the most successful that sell the most products are the guys with the good stuff. If you have the good stuff, the good whatever it might be, you get all the sale. People want to buy from you. You can charge them more. Well, when you have to grow against facilities like we have out here in Battle Mountain where people are putting up quality facilities and they're growing quality product, all the people that you guys gave licenses to here are growing quality, quality product in a controlled environment. They care, they're study, they put nutrients to it, they're growing a quality product. The drug dealer growing this stuff in his backyard with his Mormon crickets chirping on it and a few aphids on it, like, he can't compete. But if you make it where somebody gets a real good high out of it, all of a sudden you got the good stuff and you can sell more. The problem is, is that fentanyl's readily available, and a drop of it, a pinhead of it can kill you. In the hospital, as you guys know, I have a trauma center, 72 bed trauma center, open fractures come in, we give them 50 mics of fentanyl, and I put a nurse at the bedside to breathe for them, or I give them 50 of fentanyl and one of Versed because they go out, and you have to mask them and breathe for them. This is that powerful. The people that are doing this stuff on the street, they don't have, are you kidding me? Do you think they're going to be able to know if they put a little too much fentanyl in it? They try to make their stuff great to compete. It's made the market stronger for the black market people. The illegal market hates dispensaries. They hate this business. That's who should be up here talking against this. Other people selling it illegally because it's going to crush their business.
Okay, thank you, Jerry. I'll give it to you. One second here, Jerry. Commissioner Ancho.
So one other thing I would give, so the Fallon has the medicinal only. So in order to go there to even ask if they had patches, I had to go get a card. So this is what, how crazy this whole thing is. So in order to get a card, you go in and you fill out your paperwork, and they give you a number to a doctor. It's a hundred dollars to get a card, okay? And so, because I was hoping that they had these patches. So they go, okay, you go out to the parking lot and call the doctor. I went, excuse me? So, you know, okay, so I go out there, five minutes of, not even five, it was three minutes of his time. I just had to tell him that I was, all I said was my name and that I was terminal. And he said, oh, okay, now you can go back and get your card. A hundred dollars. And then they still did not have the patches that if I could have just called and they would have answered my question and told me they had, did not have the patches, I would have not have been gone there. But that, I mean, that's, it's just so much more than what people think, and it's not only just about getting high because once again, I'm not someone who. But again, I don't have a dog in the fight either because by the time this whole thing would ever come to fruition, it would not make any difference to me. As for the other people who, there are so many people who really do. And it also gets people off of opioids. You know, people utilize that instead of opioids and that in itself is huge. So.
I have one comment. Sorry. Addressing the comment about the issues with Burt in the past, that's water under the bridge. As a commissioner, I would hope that I personally would never allow things that happened 20 years ago to affect something that would happen now. Whatever happened, Burt and I get along great. That's none, it's, he did give it a huge favor. Trust me. And anyway, there's never been an issue, Burt, and I've always gotten along well. And I would not use anything like that for any of it. When I'm up here, I'm trying to be impartial for everybody. I just stated the comment about the fact about the vote because I've had so many people that have asked me about it. And I just wanted to bring it up as a possibility. It doesn't matter. My vote is if it's going to be vote the way I vote because of how I believe.
I appreciate that.
Okay. Do we have a public comment, Jerry?
Brian, I have a statement too.
Okay, Jerry, or Mike, let me, I'm going to let Jerry speak. He's been holding his hand here, and then I'll get right back to you.
Should I stay up here?
Yeah, that's fine.
Jerry Anis, my name is Jerry. Just, that took about a half an hour. There's a lot of people here that want to talk. And so we could be here all day. I have a question that may be legal of all of you. So this agenda item today for possible action, to introduce the first reading, I understand that it's going to take two, and to possibly set a public hearing. Would it be possible to schedule a public hearing prior to the second reading so that all interested parties can be educated, can listen? And, you know, we recently had a community meeting about a community bank. I think you scheduled many hours for that. I think that doing something similar, if possible, would make a lot of sense. Would that be possible?
I've never seen that done, but I've also never heard of anybody proposing that. It requires a public hearing. There has to be a public hearing in any case at the time of the second passage, at least the way I read the law. Mike, you got any different opinion?
Just also, Jerry, this is all recorded, so it's accessed through the clerk's office at all times too, so they can always watch it.
Mike McDonald, DA's office. The, this attorney Schaefer is correct from standpoint that, that the typical process and what's spelled out by law is, is there's the introduction at a county commission meeting, which is what is occurring today, the typical action. And as I indicated, is either set this for a public hearing or not. At the public hearing before the county commission, you hear all sides, and then ultimately the board acts on, on the ordinance, whether to pass it, amend it, decline to pass it, what have you. So.
Great. Well, that answers my question. I'm just here to promote a public hearing because there's, because obviously there's a lot of feelings and, different feelings about, about the situation. I would say that, you know, I don't envy any of you. You all have a hard job to do. But I would promote that we all treat one another with respect and don't go down these rabbit holes of what he said, she said back in the past. And I would leave you with this. As I came across the bridge to come to this meeting today, I see we're getting, Battle Mountain's getting their new big sign on the middle exit. And you know what it said? Says, "Last of the Old West." Well, you know, that made me smile and it made me think that just because we can does not mean that we should. Thank you.
Thank you, Jerry. Commissioner Chopp, you had a question?
Mike just answered one point off of the statement that was made early, earlier. I mean, I will state for the record, right or wrong, I don't feel that, I never had a discussion with that person, so to throw out in a public hearing that whoever told that person what, anything about me, I don't, I disagree with it. So I don't respond to threats or harassment or anything else. Never have, never will. When we talked about this earlier, I too agreed with a lot that Brian said in the beginning. I researched this. I've looked at the numbers. I agree with Kathy. I come from a place that the medical, I watched the trailer, the big motorhome pull up with three doctors. It was 300 bucks. And they wrote three, about 300 prescriptions a day. Every time they came, they came through two, three times a month. So the medical piece and the cards, it was altered and it made it worse. So I have, I'm fine with the public feedback. And as long as there's a public meeting in there, I agree with what's been said by most of the commissioners.
Thank you, Mike. Yes, sir.
If there's no further discussion, I'll make the motion.
There still is.
No, we have, we have, I'm sure we're going to have some public.
Okay.
Chad Ranneman, for the record, I just moved to Battle Mountain about four months ago. Moved back to Battle Mountain after 25 years. Now, one thing about me is I've been in recovery, active recovery for the past six years. Won't tell you all my struggles, but if you want that conversation, come and see me. I have been a ministry leader for a recovery organization for the past three years. And the one thing that was not mentioned here was the overdose with marijuana. The first thing I saw, the very first day I came to town, on our recreation center where all our children go, was get your Narcan for free over at the community health nurse. And it pissed me off. Okay? Marijuana is, you know, again, been the gateway drug or whatever. Marijuana is not our fear. In my time in recovery, I have never once seen one of my fellow recovery people overdose on marijuana. I've had the call from the hospital because they overdosed on fentanyl, on heroin, on methamphetamines, you know, all those drugs. Not once did I ever get a call at midnight that one of my guys overdosed on marijuana.
I appreciate that. Thank you.
Corinne Condon for the record. I want to ask for your yes vote for bringing a store into Battle Mountain. Unfortunately, I live with chronically ill people as well as work with chronically ill people. And I feel like strongly that it has its medical place. I feel like they need easier access to be able to get the medication that helps them. And I could list for you all the illnesses that it helps, but you probably heard that. One thing that hasn't been mentioned is I feel like it needs to be as easily accessed as alcohol is because I can tell you that I regularly see people that have injury or death related to alcohol or opioid, I can't say the word, drug use. But I haven't once seen an injury or death to marijuana use in the last 10 years that I've been working. And the other thing is that, you know, alcohol is really doing a lot of damage out there. I'm scanning a lot of really bad livers in this town, and it's due to alcohol. And I feel like if they had as easy access to cannabis, that would be a viable alternative. Six years ago, I came before the commissioners and asked for a license to grow and got it. But I tell you that I'm dead in the water if we don't get a place to sell it. So that's all I have.
Thank you.
Mr. Ramos called me, was that only yesterday or the day before? Day before. Day before. We do prosecute marijuana if it is illegal. I only had one prosecution that I recall. Robert, you can correct us if we've had more. We had a guy who was raising, or making what they call dabs at home, which is the concentrated cannabis. And he apparently was doing it for health reasons. But his home was in the trailer park. And he managed, in order to concentrate the cannabis, you have to, well, I shouldn't say you have to. I suppose it's probably more than one way to do it. But the typical way to do it is to heat it up and cook it. And in his case, he managed to set a small shed on fire in the trailer park. And it went up in smoke. Some of you might remember that day. I remembered it because it was not far from my house, and I'm looking out the window at the smoke going up. But it was back like January or February of last year. We went after him mainly because of the fire damage and the danger and all of that. But when I went through all of the stuff, because of course there was a fire, a lot of the evidence had disappeared. And some concentrated cannabis is legal in Nevada. So we had no evidence that we could get him over the legal limit. I tried seeing what we had in the way of statutes in regards to arson. All of our arson statutes require what they call mens rea, meaning an intent to actually set something on fire for an evil purpose or set something, or do something for an evil purpose. I couldn't prove that. So ultimately, I ended up having to dismiss that case. As far as I know, that was the only one. We run into marijuana a lot. But almost always, it's under the legal limits. The legal limits are reasonably robust for users, particularly given the fact that this is not the marijuana of the 80s. This stuff, all of it is, you know, even the homegrown is more powerful than what you would have typically seen back when I was a kid or many of you were kids. So you just don't see huge amounts, or at least they haven't been crossing in front of us. But to suggest that we wouldn't do anything, that's not true. If they exceed the legal limits, we go after them. But as you've heard, you've got six plants that usually is all people raise. But as you've heard, you've got six plants that usually is all people raise at home. And you can have up to 12 plants if you've got more than one person there. So, that's a lot of plants anywhere. And it's just that the law certainly allows for quite a bit. But when we see somebody doing something illegal, and I never said differently, we do prosecute it. I just haven't seen it very often because apparently, it's not necessary. Apparently, people are within the legal limits, or at least they're able to conceal it from us. If Robert brings us anything, we will, we will prosecute it, that is, or run.
Bill, I have a question for you. On, on the legal, so on the legal number of plants and the legal amount of possession, is that something that's set by local code, or is that statute?
That's statutory, and I can't think of a, of a ground on which a county could set it differently. Further, if the county were to attempt to set it differently, given the way the legislature's been in the last few years, it, it would get reversed, I would say, quickly. Because of course, legislature read those polls. It did pass by a substantial margin, lest everybody forget. But back in 2016, my recollection is that it passed like 54, 46 or something statewide. Here locally, it went down 61 to 39. So, they were wildly in favor in broad terms in Clark County and Washoe County, not so much in the rurals.
Okay. Thank you, Bill. Is there more public comment? Do you have something to say, Wayne?
Nothing, nothing, no. I, you know, I, I think that maybe Mr. Schaefer and I could agree to be on the same page, and it sounds like he'd be willing to prosecute it if brought before him. And I, I think there's one way, you bring it before your police officers if you really wanna clean up your community. Make it where anybody that you catch outside of doing it legally, as defined by the state and as approved by the, the county, make it where you can do something about it. Because then, if we have the same meeting in a year from now, and if only one person has been brought up here for, or there's only one case anybody can remember, it'd be pretty interesting. I think that, you know, they need to be held to the standards of their job, which is keep society safe and prosecute these people. And if they're not doing it, then you need to turn to the sheriffs and hold them to the standard of their job. Prosecute these people, bring them forward. And there's only one way to do that right now, is put a dispensary in here.
Okay. I'm gonna call for public comment, once again. Wayne, do you have a public comment? Wayne Nebiker, for the record?
I have a question that I'd like to ask of Mr. Quick and, and Mr. Schaefer. So, I read the, the NRS statutes, and the NRS statute states if there's a cannabis dispensary in town, that it's illegal to grow marijuana within 25 miles of that dispensary. Is that correct?
Yes.
Okay, so if there's a dispensary put in Battle Mountain, we have a 25-mile radius around town, that it's illegal to grow one plant? Correct? Okay, so that puts an undue burden on our police officers. If, if Mr. Quick sends an officer to, to Brian's home, and there's a domestic dispute or something like that, or even a robbery, and he sees one marijuana plant, he has to file the charges against you for growing an illegal plant of marijuana. Okay? And if he doesn't do that, then his officer is basically dereliction of duty. He's not doing what Mr. Ramos wants him to do. He's not enforcing the law wholeheartedly. And if we want our officers to enforce that law wholeheartedly, we're gonna need to triple the, the sheriff's department and Battle Mountain alone, just, just on that alone. You know, so I think, I think we need to put this out for a public hearing. I think the public needs to, needs to, to be given due course on exactly, exactly what the law is, because I don't think they know the exact law. And I think Mr. Schaefer and Mr. Quick, I would appreciate Mr. Quick's comments on that, on how, how are our police officers gonna enforce that?
Robert Quick, for the sheriff's office. The sheriff's office has no opinion one way or another regarding the ordinance specifically. However, directly to your comment, we've run into a current situation where we've arrived at many calls, and we do see these marijuana plants. But because there's such a limitation on what we can do and the numbers, and there's a huge difference between knowing and being able to prove things.
Correct.
Where if this wasn't acted, it would actually improve our ability to take action on a much smaller scale. So, it will increase workload, but until we see it, we can't determine what workload will be increased.
Thank you, Robert. So, I would like to respond to Wayne, is putting undue stress on our police department because they're enforcing laws. So, there's a lot of DUIs that are issued in this town.
Correct.
It is completely within the power of this board to pass an ordinance to make Lander County dry. Should we do that? So, people, so it's against the law. I mean, we don't even sell it in our town. Because that would lessen our police force. And maybe we could get rid of some public safety positions, because there's a lot less they're having to trek to see if people, I mean, it just doesn't, doesn't make sense, you know? If I'm looking at it logically. I think the sheriff's department is going to enforce the laws that are on the books. And it's just, just like Robert said, it makes it a little bit easier for them to do it, simply because of the numbers that are set by statute. So, I just, I, I just have to disagree with your comment.
Okay, 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 that, that's fine. We're here to, we're here to agree or disagree, and that's what this is all about. Like I said in the previous meeting, if you guys wanna throw rocks at me, throw them. I got the courage to throw rocks at the beehive, so.
Statistically, sir, that's so, statistically, I have a hard time talking. You know what I'm trying to say? In the States, that that's true, and that is not marijuana, it has still not the issue. Because the most, the small, the ones that grow the smaller plants within the radius will utilize that. Still, the issue is the fentanyl, the medication, it's not so much. They're not seeing like, the people, the law enforcement is having to make all of these drug busts for the one or two plants they're seeing. Statistically, that's, they have not been seeing that, because that was one of the things I wanted to, I actually wanted to prove. Because the first time this came around, I was against it too. When it came there the first time, I was against it. So, statistically, I thought I would, you know, get in there and find those numbers. And that was absolutely, that was not, they did not find that as the case. Well, you have a few cases once here and there, but statistically, those numbers did not skyrocket to where they needed more law enforcement.
Yes, Wayne.
Okay, okay, I, I can agree with that, but also, so if we do, we do this, and we have a dispensary in town, how is that gonna, I, I don't, I don't see how that's going to prevent any fentanyl-laced marijuana from, from entering our, our community. I don't see how that's gonna help one little bit.
It's not gonna stop it.
It's not gonna, it's not gonna stop.
What it does, it gives a safe source for people who choose to smoke the driver, to use the gummies, a safe place to buy it. No different than, you can go down to either a grocery store in town, and you can buy a six-pack of beer and a shirt, that that alcohol you're drinking is safe. That wasn't made of somebody's base. And then you're gonna go blind from drinking it. It's the same thing, right? It's, it's, there's moonshine out there, there's people that make it.
Oh, yeah.
I'm not gonna buy it. I'm not gonna go blind, I'm not gonna drink it, right? If I wanna buy some strong stuff, I'll go to, down here, and I'll buy some Everclear, and I'll go home as an adult, and I'll have some fun.
Oh, my God.
Okay, but, but, but in my opinion, we, we need to, we need to have, at least have a hearing on this, on this, and let, let the public, because I think the ramifications for, for anybody that, that grows a marijuana plant in their home is, is, is real.
Okay. Thank you, Wayne. Is there more public comment? Yes, sir.
John Davis, for the record. Uh, I don't know. When this went to vote in the state, I'm a, would say a pretty strong conservative. I was a no vote. I don't use it, never have. I was too. Never will. I voted no. The majority of the people in the state voted yes. And I realized that Lander County was a, a no on that at the time. But I would bet you, if it was on the ballot again, with the change in demographics in our, in our town, I bet you it would pass Lander County, outside looking in. My own personal opinion. I would still be one of the no guys, 'cause I'm that guy. But it's legal. Statute's there. I agree, the commission should put the ordinances in so that law enforcement, DA can prosecute what is illegal. It's not gonna stop the, the, the laced fentanyl. I agree with Commissioner Sparks, it will give somebody, an honest person that is wanting to do it legally, an avenue to go. Right now, strictly from a business point, the county's missing out on, I don't know how many dollars in tax dollars, because it's either going to Elko County or Humboldt County. So, why not cash in on the tax revenue of that? I personally don't know why Mr. Ramos is beating his head against this, because is there that many sales in Lander County of that, or you're gonna become a millionaire off this? I mean, come on.
Did you just say Ramos?
And, so, I, I mean, I think I would, there's gonna be another reading. A public reading. The public will have an opportunity to be at that reading and voice their concerns, and the commission will have to vote on it one more time after that hearing. Is that correct?
That's correct, yes.
So, it either dies on a no, or you put it out there and let the public have another, one more opportunity to voice their opinion at the next ordinance. It's not done until that next vote.
That's right. Thank you, John.
One technical thing, just so everybody is still aware, that you need to write to Congress, I mean, if you disagree with it, because it's still illegal, it's like you've said, it's legal. It's still illegal under federal law. And believe it or not, in Nevada, all they did is they went down the list of prohibited prosecution. They didn't go to the extent of saying it was legal, which is weird, but that's what they did.
Right. Bill, as far as, is still the legal federally, but the state recognized, uh, the legal assistance?
Yes. Okay. Lenny Shepherds, for the record. And everybody knows that I'm against this, but it should be a hearing, a public hearing, and it should go to the ballot. It shouldn't be decided by five people up there. It should be decided by everybody that pays taxes in this town. And there's a, you could go to Elko or Winnemucco, maybe, maybe you can't get the stuff that you need in Elko or Winnemucco. Who says they're gonna have it here? It's the same difference.
Like I said, Lenny, I don't have a dog in the fight, because by the time that-
You are, you are, Kathy.
No, I'm fighting for people.
Let her speak, please, let her speak.
Well, I'm fighting for people, because no, I do not have a dog in the fight. Because before they turn over their first dirt, it will not make one bit of difference to me as far as where I am health-wise. So, no, sir, I do not. So, and another thing, what I'm speaking on, it should go to the taxpayers, that'll tell the voters, then on anything that comes in front of this commission, should that therefore go in front of, then nobody here should have one way to vote on anything. Every, every vote should go in front of the taxpayer on every single thing. That is why you have a commission. This is not an illegal thing that we're doing. It was passed before. For one, it's legal through the state of Nevada. Okay? If you don't want to go in and utilize it, that's fine. However, me, it doesn't matter. I truly, makes no difference to me at that point. So, I'm fighting for the other people who have huge health issues, that this helps more than you would ever know. And I honestly do pray truly, and I mean this, that you never are in that position where you have something, where medications, the normal medications that are out on the market do absolutely nothing to you, and you're in such excruciating pain, that I'd actually rather be ran over and put out of my misery than have to put up with that pain. And I, I truly pray to God that you never, ever have to experience it, because opioids do nothing for it, nothing.
Well, I, I feel real sorry for you. I really do.
I don't want, I don't need this.
But I do. But who put this on the agenda to bring this up?
Me, absolutely.
Okay, then you, you have a dog in the fight. Your, your, your vote shouldn't count.
Pardon me, I-
Your, your vote, if you vote on this, it should not count. You brought, you put it on the agenda, and you get to vote on it.
What personal gain, sir? I, for what personal gain? And you know what I'll do, just like I do every, every time somebody brings something else up like that? Lenny, as soon as I'm done voting with, with it go, we vote on it, guess what? I'll turn myself into the ethics board, and then I'll send you the packet, and you can see what they say about me.
I'm just saying, right's right.
No, I, I don't, I disagree, so we'll have to-
And, and, and another thing, Burt Ramos should be sitting here. He's got a dog in the fight. He's got his name, I got a list here. He's, he's listed four times for a dispensary.
That's why he's been asked to leave.
But he, but he's been involved in it.
That's why he, it's being decided, apparently you got slight misconception. First off, commissioners can and often do put things on an agenda, it's their agenda. And it's not at all unethical for them to go down the same item that they put on the agenda. Like, we got feral cats, somebody put it on there, does that mean that that's what's next? Does that mean that they can't vote on trying to figure out what we're gonna do with feral cats? No. So, well, I'm agreeing with you on the overall issue, whether or not I would support marijuana sales.
And I'm not trying to pick on Kathy or anybody. I, I'm just saying, rights, right, and you, you can't, you can't bring the law up and then get to vote on it. That's not right.
That's what I'm saying, that is, there is nothing at all wrong with that. That is perfectly legitimate, it is done all the time.
That's how legislator gets bills passed.
Correct. Legislators also, they sponsor bills, and they vote on the same bill they sponsor.
Well, I don't know, it, it's just like, you have an option, you can go to Elko. There's, there's people in my lifetime that I know had to go kidney dialysis. And guess what they get to do? Three days a week, they get to go to Elko, or, or Winnemucco, or Reno. I don't see anybody jumping in there trying to get a dialysis thing in the hospital here. I mean, it's the same difference.
Okay, thank you, Eric. Yeah, wait further.
Well, I, I'm, I'm gonna stick to my guns on, this needs to be a public hearing, and they probably need two of them, and needs to be publicized, and it should go to the ballot. I, I really don't think five people should be deciding something like this.
Okay. All right, well, thank you for your time, Eric.
Thank you, Bill.
Is there any, any other-
And I'm sorry, Kathy.
No, no worries.
I really am, I'm sorry for you.
No, I don't think, that's fine, I appreciate that, once again.
Shirley Shepherd. And I, I just went through the, the four items where this was already the chapter 453A. And they've kind of explained about the legal part of it, because now there's a cannabis board that is going to control this instead of the Department of Taxation, so that takes care of A. I'm still have yet to see about protecting the public health, safety, and welfare of our residents, children, and business from harmful secondary effects. How has that been addressed? What, what's gonna stop these secondary effects? And I, I'm presuming that is the smell, because we discussed that with Ted Herrera when he was in here, that there is gonna be a smell. So, how, how is that smell when they cultivate and do all that stuff?
Well, you already have that going on.
What's that?
They're already growing it, do you smell it?
No, I'm not talking about the growing, but this was, this was why they didn't wanna have a dispensary and stuff here.
Have you ever been in a dispensary?
No, and I never will be, so don't ask me that question. I, I'm not going there either. Because I, 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 I'm old school, and you're not gonna change my mind. The other thing on this one is, the, Mr. Quick has kind of said that it's not gonna be a problem with the sheriff's office, and you all agree with that, right? Because that was what, that's, that's one of these, that, that they don't have the necessary infrastructure and resources to monitor it. But now you're saying they do, right?
Yeah, I think it answers a lot.
Okay. And then the other one is the, where it's to be located. They said it would have to be put within a close geographic proximity to residential neighborhoods, schools, parks, religious institutions, due to our small population. What are we doing about that? Because I don't want it out on my way, which I've already heard rumor that it is a possibility, because they wanna see it from the road, from the- because they want to see it from the road, from the freeway. So, what's protecting our, what's protecting a residential neighborhood? Are you gonna protect a residential neighborhood?
Mr. Ramos seems to have an answer for you.
Thank you, Ms. Sheppard. I, just to address those things, when, when you put a dispensary in, it's not marijuana for all. They're not handing it out at high school basketball games. It's not, that's not what this is. You're not allowed to smoke in a public place, and that's part of the law. And your, your sheriff then can enforce that. Your, your people enforce the law. So, it's not that you can even use it in a public place. You're not supposed to. If you're smelling it, somebody's there that's not supposed to be doing it. Just like if you go into a restaurant and they have no smoking, you start smelling smoking, somebody's doing something they're not supposed to be doing. Same thing with that. With regard to putting it in residential neighborhoods, the state law is very clear on that. Not within a thousand feet of, of a church, not within three hundred feet of a public community gathering spot. And they put the same restrictions on neighborhoods, and normally it's, you know, five hundred feet to a thousand feet of a neighborhood where you put a store.
Well, that's, that's nothing. That's, we're in five acre portions. They could put it next door.
Yeah, you could be, so, when you're talking acres out here, which is a blessing for you guys, you can get people a long ways apart. My point being is it's not a free-for-all, where you can just like, you can't go put a store up in the school parking lot.
Well, I understand that.
They're very well-defined.
I, I'm more concerned, I'm sure they're going to, they're going to keep it away from schools, parks, and religious institutions. I'm worried about my neighborhood.
Yep.
I don't want a dispensary in my neighborhood.
And the same thing applies to that, as far as the distance relation goes. Now, you may not agree with the distances, but there are distances in place.
Well, I mean, you're just telling me that they can put it in my, in my, they can put it where they want to put it, across from Golden Gate.
Is that more than a thousand feet from your home?
Absolutely.
They can put it in Golden Gate.
Well, then I'm, I'm, another reason I'm totally against it, because I don't think it should be anywhere near residential.
Okay. Thank you, Shirley. Lenny Sheppard, again. I, I think if it does pass, they should say where they're gonna put it before it goes on the ballot. Because the last time this thing passed, then they didn't know where to put it, and they were trying to put it on top of everybody, and it finally ended up out there. Nobody else wanted it around them. And, that's, that's my point. So, if you have a plan, or in action, where you're gonna put this, if it passes, should say the destination and the address.
Yeah.
And people should know that this is gonna come in there, that this is where they want to do it, so they have a time to complain. There was a lot of complaints the last time, out on Allen Road.
Mr. Sheppard, how many complaints have you heard since it went out there? None?
I don't know.
Not a single one. In fact, we have not had a single complaint since we've been here. As have neither of the other people.
I, I didn't, I didn't say that, but the people were mad, because they put it close to them, and they didn't know about it. And people need to be notified that this could happen to you, and it should be in advance, not after the fact.
One thing I'd actually consider, and I think the commission needs to consider it as well, and then, and then just be all I'd have to say on the topic, and that's that, I, I agree with being very conscientious of where it's placed in the community, and I think a conscientious ownership will do that. Because we want to be good citizens of the community. However, don't put us out where we can be robbed by all the people going down I-80 in the middle of nowhere in some black, dark corner. There's a, there's a safety response issue here with the officers getting to the place if needed. All dispensaries are rigged with an emergency call button. They go directly to the sheriff's office. And they need to be able to respond, and that needs to be considered by the council. When you do this, if, if this does work, pass, work past public hearing, all the other steps this has, we, it can't, you don't want to create an unsafe situation. This is here to create a more safe situation.
But you don't want to create somebody's peace and tranquility where they live.
Yeah.
And then, all the traffic's coming in, and that's a, that's a big thing to me.
Yep. I agree with you.
And, and that's why I agree, Lenny, if you're gonna do this, because I can tell you're gonna do it. If you're gonna do it, then please be respectful for the people, and let them at least have their say about, I mean, that's just like, if they put it out there by Golden Gate, that traffic is gonna affect us, whether we live a thousand feet or whatever. You understand that?
Yeah.
I mean, I don't know where you'd put it. That's why this is in here.
We want to know.
Because of our geographic proximity. There was a reason that was put in here, and I just don't know why all of a sudden all these things, some of them make sense with the new, the new rules, but, and, and I'm gonna say something else, and you can believe me or not believe me, but, when people will sit here and tell me that marijuana does not hurt them, that it is not a mind-altering drug, they're wrong. In my, I have two people in my family, not my immediate family here, but in my family in California, that have, there's two of our, my nieces and nephews, that have started on marijuana at a young age. One of them has been totally unable to hold down a job, has spent, smoked it and spent three days in bed. Another one is so dysfunctional, he can't hold down a job, but it's just like life is a big old fairy tale, and the job is the least important thing in his life. So, don't any of you tell me that marijuana is not mind-altering. It is.
Yeah. And Ms. Sheppard, I, I would, I would agree with you, that it certainly has psychoactive effects, and, and that's why you have people with mental illness who use it. That's why you have people with neurologic conditions that use it.
Absolutely.
So, you have people with nausea, or block tumor, or post-cancer that use it. It absolutely has an effect on the body, there is no doubt. What I would tell you is, was you give your example of your niece, and, and this, hear me out here, because I know you want to say something. Seventy percent, they did a poll in Nevada, seventy percent of Nevadans have used marijuana or currently use marijuana. Seventy percent of them. So, you look around this room here, and seventy percent of everybody in here is screwed up.
I, I see that. I, I agree. I'm seeing that. I'm absolutely seeing that.
And so, so-
Yeah. And I'm not happy about it either, especially when, when we elect them.
So, you, you can't, we, we can't, we can't legislate. We can't legislate, we can't rule make to the one, to the one person.
I, yeah. How sad is that? Well, like, like I say, this new world is not very quick on delivery.
Thank you, Shirley. Is there any more public comment? Okay. So, I'm gonna move forward and get this wrapped up. I'm going to make a motion that we set for a public hearing, ordinance number 2024-1, an ordinance that repeals Lander County Code, Chapter 8.45, prohibition of medical marijuana establishment, creating Chapter 5.28 cannabis establishments in Title V, Business License and Regulations. Moving, reenacting, and amending the provision of Chapter 8.46 recreational medical marijuana cultivation facilities in Title H. Health and safety to the new Chapter 5.28 cannabis establishments in Title V, Business License and Regulations, to allow and license the operational medical cannabis establishments, including cultivation facilities, independent testing laboratories, production facilities, and dispensaries, and adult-use cannabis establishments, including cultivation facilities, independent testing laboratories, production facilities, distributors, and retail stores as authorized under Chapter 678A through 678D of the Nevada revised statute repealing Chapter 8.46 recreational and medical marijuana cultivation facility and provide other matters relating to. So, I'm gonna make that motion, and I'm also gonna make sure that everybody knows this will go to publication. Everybody will be notified of this public hearing that we will have. So, there's a motion on the floor, there's a second. There is a second. All in favor, say aye. Aye?
Aye.
All right. Commissioner Chaff?
All opposed, say nay.
He voted aye.
Okay. All right. So, we will, we will publish it for public hearing, and it will be published, so everybody knows when that time will be. And I thank everybody for coming to speak on the issue. It's, it's definitely a passionate one for people, so, so we're gonna move on to-
Wait, wait, Brian, please somebody there on the-
Yes.
Just a suggestion, it was public hearing. All this law that, that you just made this comment on, or, needs to be publicized a little bit more, where it tells you what the law entails. It also gives the code violations of where, or, the code, or where the buildings can be placed, and all this stuff. Kind of clarifies a lot of the questions that have been asked today. It's thought to be published out, through the hearing, that it be really out.
Okay. So, is that something that we can do? I mean, how, or how do we go about doing that? Or, rather than, I mean, we could publish, we could publish the statutes, where people can just go onto the website, click the statute, and read it. I don't know how, could it be such a lengthy thing?
Yeah. If I may, Mike McDonald, District Attorney's Office. As far as the actual ordinance, proposed ordinance, it is attached, and will be attached to the future agenda, and, and it is available for, for anybody to, to obtain. As it relates to the specific zoning or those types of things, those are items that also need to, I, I suggest, need to be addressed through zoning ordinances, and we'll be working on, on some of those types of things. This, this ordinance does not address some of those things. Within state law, there are, as, as discussed earlier, certain limitations as to how close the, the establishment can be to certain types of, of facilities, or, or businesses, or different things. In addition, I think there's limitations on whether, at least on the medical, on the medical use, they clearly cannot be in residential neighborhoods, because it indicates that it's gonna be commercial or industrial. And so, state law does address some of those things. The, the zoning ordinances that, that we need to take a look at, and probably be presenting before Planning Commission, and ultimately the County Commission at a later date, will also follow up and, and address, I think, some of those questions and concerns.
One other thing I would point out, everything's online, that is, every, there'll be a video of this, probably later today, if history is any indication, but it certainly will be quickly. Then there'll also be minutes, and so, all of the stuff that was said today will be available to the public, and has been, like any other county commissioner meeting. You can get there from the county website, and I think it's at the clerk's office website, isn't it? Yeah. So, you can get agendas, minutes, all that stuff, and the videos going back several years in the, I don't know how far back they go exactly, but quite a ways. So, you can, it's certainly before marijuana was legal, so you can look at everything involved in the, in the topic that has happened.
Okay. Thank you. I'm gonna allow, one more public comment, then we're gonna break for, just take a ten-minute break here. Yes, sir.
Mr. McDonald, all these ordinances, will they be updated before this goes through, or, or before the public hearing?
The, the ordinance that is proposed and be, that will be addressed at the next public hearing is the one that's attached to this agenda. There, there, there is the opportunity for changes to address any issues or, or decisions that are made at or after that public hearing. So, so it will be potentially altered. One, one area that I, I do believe that we need to look at, as it relates to the, the draft that's before the board now, is we didn't change any of the fees. Fees were based on what was allowed under NRS, under law. There were some changes, is my understanding, as it relates to the fees for licenses at the state level, and to keep our ordinance in line with the state on the amount of fees, we may make some amendments there, but that's the only change that I'm aware of, of, to the proposed ordinance before you today.
Okay. I appreciate that, but, you know, my greatest concern is the distance between our dispensary to that school.
Yeah.
And, I mean, just because the state says X, doesn't mean we have, doesn't mean we can't exceed X.
And, and as I indicated earlier, this, this proposed draft is addressing, really, the licensing by the county. As far as location or zoning, that, that needs to be addressed in, in our zoning statutes, as far as the type of zone that, that any of these cannabis establishments may be allowed, and then clearly have to follow state law, as, as it relates to distances from parks, churches, different things along those lines.
Hold on. Austin asked, they can't, you can't hear them talk. So, Austin asked, can you ask where the tax revenue is going? Can we make sure that that is implemented? That's something that we would address down the line, right? That wouldn't be addressed today?
Yeah.
Okay.
Okay. We're gonna take a ten-minute break. Thanks, everybody. All right, guys, we're gonna continue on, we're gonna jump on the agenda, we're gonna go to 1.16, Nevada Gold Mines, been waiting here patiently, and we're gonna take this item up. For discussion of possible action to approve, disapprove, final comments can be submitted on Robertson Mine Propose, groundwater impacts to Indian Creek, and proposed mitigating impacts to domestic wells and water rights, private property impacts to landowners along Indian Creek.
So, commissioners, we did, we did get a response from Nevada Gold Mines, and some mitigating factors that, that we would like to consider before we oppose this, and, and potentially come back before you with a letter of support for this, once these mitigating factors are put in place.
Hold on, I think. Chaff, are you trying to speak?
Yes. I abstain from this discussion, either this is my lawyer.
Thank you.
So, Mike is abstaining, because this is my lawyer. Okay, so, does the, is the commission good with that?
Mm-hmm.
Okay. So, I guess we'll now address the item? Or, do you guys have anything that you'd like to say, or?
No. We don't need to say anything. Okay. All right. No, no action required, and we'll be back before you with, like I said, once we get this in place, and with a letter of support from you guys.
Okay. Well, thank you for waiting patiently.
Yes, I appreciate it.
Okay. So, we're gonna get back on the regular course of the agenda here. We're gonna move to 1.10 for discussion of possible action to come up with a solution to maintain feral cats within Lander County. So, this was, I think it was Mr. Davis, if I recall, last meeting, said there's some issues with that, and he wanted to discuss it, and so we're here for discussion on that. Hey, Johnny?
Thanks, commissioners. John Davis. So, I did ask that this get put on the agenda, about the feral cat problem. I do not have the answers on what process to take on that. I have my own personal views, but I'm gonna keep those to myself. But, it is, it is a problem. The old Lemare's building, which I think is kind of not county property, but is kind of whatever that is, but the old Lemare Building Facilities, 70 East Eighth, Altenburg, in front of the school. I see the county's building a new building on, next to the well, whatever it is, on that little pipe piece. I mean, you guys should be concerned about this, because whatever you put in there, or store in that building, is gonna be ruined if you don't get the cats under control. I don't know if animal control can do it. Can you put a, a budget, a line item in there to hire somebody to do it? I don't know what the answers are, but collectively, let's do something about it. Collect them, have them spayed, put them up for adoption. Do something.
Okay. So, I'll speak to what I do know, is I know that we, we do allocate some money for exactly that, of collecting the, and then getting them spayed or neutered, but outside of that, not for sure how the enforcement of it works, what it says in the code. Is it something that, I know we have a dog catcher, but you never have him referred to as a dog cat catcher? Can they, can they, can they trap cats as well? So, just open for discussion on it.
Robert Quick, the sheriff's office. Currently, the ordinance, the patrol ordinances do not cover anything related to cats. We have a feral cat spay and neuter program in our budget that we do provide vouchers for. The county has added additional funds for that as well, which we've then added more funds to that. But currently, there is no enforcement through animal control for cats.
Okay. Bill, just a legal question, as far as the ordinances, is there any reason, or anybody else, of why we wouldn't have an ordinance to handle cat population? If we have one for dogs, why wouldn't it include cats as well?
Well, traditionally, cats have been as much of a danger to people as dogs, and in civilization and history, cats may have been, in prehistory, my understanding is cats may have been developed from a larger feline species principally for catching mice, and as a result, most civilized areas early on wanted to have lots of cats to try to keep the mice from eating their wheat and so on. As a practical matter, a cat bite, it happens occasionally, but not very many people. Cat scratches happen, but again, that's not severe. Those are various reasons. People have not opted, most places, to have any kind of ordinance with a cat, whereas dog bite obviously could be life-threatening under certain circumstances. People have been killed by dogs. Yet to hear of a person being killed by a cat, but the world being what it is, somebody must have, rare. But those are the reasons, as far as I know, that most people do not have a cat ordinance. But, taking care of the feral cats is a separate issue. You can do that in your budget, whether you have an ordinance regulating the cats or not, or you can pass an ordinance and we can require that within a certain area they be spayed or what have you, under the same circumstances that a dog would be spayed.
Well, let me ask you that question. So, if we allocate money to handle the feral cat problem, is there any statute that's going to get in our way as far as saying how we can handle the problem?
Not that I can think of.
Okay. So, we wouldn't necessarily have to pass an ordinance, we could just budget to...
Which we did.
Yeah, and, by the way, Robert, you do have, my recollection is you do have cages or whatever they are, traps for cats if people have a problem and they want to catch cats where they're at, if you sometimes lend out. Is that correct or no?
Robert Quick for the sheriff's office, we do maintain loner traps for both dogs and cats.
And then, so basically, then if somebody is like, if I was to come borrow one and I catch a cat, then it'd be my business to basically take them or relocate them somewhere if I wanted to, just to get them out of the city limits?
Correct.
And there's no statute prohibiting that?
No.
Okay.
The people that have done the feral cat collections have utilized those traps to catch the feral cats, have them spayed and neutered, and then they've released them wherever.
Usually what they do to mark that they're a stray cat is after they're spayed or neutered, they'll clip one ear.
The left ear.
The left ear, and that way you know that it's a stray cat, but it has been addressed. I have a friend over in Eureka that does it, and she does probably 70 cats a year. So, we tried to institute part of that program in Austin, and we were told by the sheriff's office that they didn't have enough money to handle Austin and that amount of bull. So, we took a few cats in from Austin this year, but, and then you got to catch the vet, you know, because you got to find a vet that will actually do the program for you because they only want to do two or three cats every time you take them in. And you have to take care of them and nurse them until they're well enough to be put back out. It's a big process.
See, that's my question, is that you catch these things, it's like, who's to say we have to spay or neuter them if we're going to remove them out of the city limits? Or do they work their way back? Is that the point?
They've never been euthanized. Usually they're just spayed or neutered.
So, my name's Haley Kane. I've been helping with the TNR here in town that you guys allotted money to with Jennifer Jonas. We have already spayed and neutered 91 cats, and we've removed nine from the Lemare Building. Currently, we've been working with the airport, getting some of the strays out of there, behind the OT, in front of the school, over by the hospital, the rodeo grounds, and...
Well, removing nine of them is not a number that's really...
But that's inside, what was inside the building. We've removed nine from inside of it.
And how long have we been doing this program now?
Less than a year.
So, what do you do to get a large scale, to get it under control?
So, we've, so far, we've had two actual TNR clinics, and at those clinics, we have had a Dr. Morgan from Elko who has worked with us, and we have gotten 25 cats done each day that we have done that. The issue is we have to work with Dr. Morgan in scheduling. Jennifer Jonas actually did put in a paper request this morning to try and get on your next agenda where she is going to have, ask Dr. Morgan to also come and speak with you.
Okay, that's fine. So, I think we're looking at further, I'd like just to maybe spitball some other ideas of how we, maybe some other solutions to it, just for that simple fact, it's almost like a diminishing returns, like we're throwing this at it, but it's not fast enough, and these cats keep populating, and the problem continues to grow, and it's like we're throwing away good money. So, it's like, that's what I'm concerned, is like, it's all open for ideas, suggestions, or I might be wrong, whatever.
So, I mean, I'm not, forgive me, but I'm not very passionate about cats. So, if I borrowed that trap and I end up euthanizing that cat, what's, if there's no ordinance about that, where am I at?
That's why I'm asking if there's a statute that prohibits it, because that's what, because we know there's not an ordinance.
Robert Quick for the sheriff's office, the sheriff's office has no enforcement action regarding cats, unless, unless it's a cruelty issue.
Well, what's going on with these cats is cruel anyways. I mean, they are better off being euthanized than what's going on in the public right now. If, I mean, and unfortunately, everybody doesn't believe in it, but to get it under control on a large scale, that may have to be an option. And I know everybody's not a fan of it, but what's going on is not humane either.
Yeah, because they're all diseased and have distemper and...
Correct.
Do we have any ideas from any other towns or cities of what they do with their populations and try to get some ideas?
They're all dealing with the same issue. And I know personally that Jennifer is going out trying to trap and feeds them, traps them on her own personal time. She's also done, outside of the TNR days here, has driven back and forth to the Elko clinic, taking on her own time to take these cats over.
She's not a cat fan?
No, she's a dog person.
But, she, I mean, she, and she does, and she...
And we've rehomed 14 kittens also that we've found. A lot of the issue we're running into is we're not getting people in the public to work with us. We've had people say they don't want to have the TNR go and help some, to control some of these colonies, because they're worried about animal control coming after them.
Well, that doesn't sound like it's a problem.
It's not a problem, right? So, where do we go?
So, does any, I mean, how do we get rid of them on a large scale? Or control them on a large scale?
I mean, I want to suggest, I guess you could hire a professional trapper to come in. I mean, it's going to cost taxpayers dollars to do it, and actually, like, you have a problem area, have them focus on that area where they're all captured, then it's like working with the vet to get them spayed, to get them neutered, and then at that point, you don't necessarily go and put them back in the same spot, right? It's like, it's, the point is to get them, to remove them from the location.
Correct.
And, so, yeah, I don't know.
To get somebody to take them.
So, that's, so who, how do we handle that then? Who is in charge of that? If you're going to take county funds and try to clean up the cat population, who has to, who manages that?
Right now, yeah, nobody, because we don't have anything on the books that manage the cats like that. Only thing we have on the books, John, is the money that we allocate for the spay and neuter. Beyond that, correct me if I'm wrong, we don't have anything other than just that.
So, let me just put it there, is it an option, we could put an ordinance in place to where you are addressing cats as well as dogs, you capture them, you have them spayed, neutered, you put them in the facility, not the same dog facility.
Yeah, and then you need a cat.
But, but the point is, you give people the option to adopt, and if they don't, it'd be similar with the dogs, you euthanize them, right? So, I mean, is that a possibility? Is it...
But then we've already paid to have them spayed or neutered.
Too taxing, is it...
But I think you have one, you know, two or three dogs to 50 cats is where you have that issue, too, and housing them, because you have then the cat fighting if you have too many of them, and then the disease, because even with the dogs, when there are problems, we have to have the vet come in and doctor them and do that. And not that I'm against, I'm not saying, because these are just the problems that they run into, that like, I don't think, like Reno even doesn't eat much with cats either, because that human, humane society does. And so, that cat population is so huge, I think that it's, that if everybody is, you know, struggling to figure out what to do.
So, there's a budget for it. So, I know Ms. Jonas, so if we collaborated, got with the county manager, how do we get those funds approved for private animal control, if that's what it takes?
I think the funds, I think the funds are in the sheriff's budget, they're...
So, we got to deal with...
Animal control side, the funds that the commission gave were to Ms. Jonas as a grant for the spay and neuter program, but it didn't come through us.
Got, it was a grant?
Yes.
But you guys still have money in your budget.
And the funds in the sheriff's office budget is strictly for vouchers related to spaying.
I mean, it could always come back.
So, me as a property owner, I am responsible to take care of everybody else's frickin' cats financially.
I think that...
So, I will, I can do it my own way.
Well, that's my point. I was just going to bring up, do you make an ordinance to where you allow for a property owner to address the cats as a nuisance, to basically remove them from their property?
But right now, Mr. Sparks, is that less is more.
Yeah, just leave it alone.
I don't need an ordinance. If Mr. Quick has no control, I will handle it my way. So, in some cases, less is more, and it sounds to me like this might be, I don't think it's right that I should have to pay for somebody else's problem out of my pocket.
Keep in mind, there are limits on discharge of firearms in town.
Give me a little credit, Bill. All right, so, I guess I know where I stand on this issue. Thank you.
Commissioner Sparks, Robert Quick for the sheriff's office, just wanted to address a statement that Commissioner Hellman made regarding lack of funds for Austin, and you can't cover Austin. And if somebody in my staff related that to you or someone in the community, that's absolutely inaccurate, and I apologize for that. The funding we have is for Nander County, and so, all, whether it be Battle Mountain or Austin, what we don't have funds for is to bring in someone to catch these cats.
So, she's been catching and taking the money on her own and getting it taken care of.
Where we also struggle is getting a vet to go to Austin. We do have a vet, a traveling vet that comes into Battle Mountain to do spay and neuters, and we're still working with that vet to try and get them to Austin, but where we struggle is getting a vet that was willing to go to Austin.
I think she's been working with the Eureka vet on what she's been doing, because that's the closest vet.
Okay, so, there's no more discussion? Yes, sir. I'm sorry, go ahead.
James Matthews for the record. Two things that need to be added to an ordinance for the feral cats. One of them is, there needs to be a part of the ordinance that says something about dumping the cats, because I live on Mule Shoe, and between White Ridge and Mule Shoe, probably in this time of the year when kittens come around, there's probably anywhere from 50 to 25 to 50 cats dropped. They show up around the house all the time. The other one is, is there needs to be something in the ordinance for somebody that's feeding cats randomly around town. They need to put a stop to it, just like the bears at Tahoe, it's got to stop feeding the bears so they quit coming around. One of the two, the biggest reasons why, but this time of year, the cats start showing up on Mule Shoe, they disappear because we have a good coyote population, so this is one of the big things. One of the biggest things about feral cats is they're the largest predator in the United States. So, when you don't see any songbirds around, you know you have a feral cat population. So, this needs to be taken care of, and I agree with John, they're all over town, you see them here and there, there's probably 10 or 15 cats by the time you get off First Street to the dyke, and most of them are feral cats. So, you know, we need to have an ordinance to take care of this thing. I know it's one of those things that people don't want to get involved with, you know, we pick up dogs all the time, but nobody ever bothers the cat population, and it needs to be taken care of.
Okay, thanks, Trevor. All right, did you have other comments, sir? Sorry, Marty, I almost forgot.
No, no, that's okay, that happens.
Martin Ugaldi, no one really. At the risk of alienating myself in this community, and I really shouldn't be saying this, I don't know if this is appropriate, but you've got a, you've got a dispensary coming to town, possibly. So, I would imagine if maybe you put out some fun milk, probably at some point, it wouldn't take long, you'd be herding the cow, the cat, the cats, you know, into one location, I don't know. You know, you tranquilize animals, I don't know, I mean, maybe a portion of the...
Well, like, with the feral, like, the horse problem, right? They do the injections to sterilize the horse, is that an option for cats where you don't? I mean, I don't know anything about pet cats anatomy, that, is that something you can't do?
I was just wondering, like, you tranquilize larger animals, if you maybe put out something that they would be, you know, attracted to, they, at some point, maybe you could hurt them, you know? You might even bring in cats from other counties, I don't know. It was just a thought, I'm sorry.
Thank you, Marty. So, I've received a couple emails since we've been talking about, there's some people that would like to speak on it, so I don't know if it's something we could maybe push to a future agenda to hear their comment on, or I might just respond, have it with the county manager and the sheriff's department, if you feel like our direction today is enough for what you guys would like to do.
I would kind of like to see, what does, what do Winemuk and Elko do? Everybody has to have problems with cats, and see if they have something that we don't know about, other than just spading them, neutering them, you know, maybe on the next agenda, we bring it back and maybe contact them and see if they're doing something, if somebody has an idea other than putting it in a facility, because that's far too expensive. What else are they doing, because, you know, everybody has feral cats, so maybe we're not seeing something that's out there that they may be doing, a suggestion.
Yeah, I didn't have much time to do any research on this, but I do know from reading just past hunting articles in hunting magazines that feral cats are a huge problem on wildlife, and like, you know, songbirds that were spoke of, and, you know, the potential ordinance coming forward would be something that maybe could put some teeth on it. I know when we put emotions into something like this, it's hard for people to see that, but sometimes the best answer is getting the population back down, and that might be a lot of euthanizing, and should be considered, you know?
Yes, sir. John Davis for the record.
I would just like to ask that, I know we missed the budget season, but that the commission next year look at putting some funds in, maybe more funds into animal control as maybe a broad base, not only cats, but whatever animal, a broad-based animal control fund to help control this with a, on a private, you know, so that the county actually has a way to, hey, there's a problem, we have these money set aside in this fund to hire private sector animal control.
So, we do do something similar to that at the golf course, we hire out for gopher trapping and things like that, bringing, you know, some guys that are more expertise in that, and I don't see why we couldn't do something similar with this. It's just a dealing with them after you have them in the trap.
Because they aren't feral.
Yeah, no, I get it, and it's not going to be public, probably not very popular with, in some cases, but it is what it is.
And you know something that we might, and we haven't thought about doing, is asking our doctor about the health issue of it, because they are, there are a lot of them that are diseased and cause issues that way. Is there something, under a health, when you have so many, because, because what I was just thinking of is, when my daughter was in Japan, a lot of them in the Navy, they, those people lead their animals, and they lead their cats, and they start to get those, and then Navy just comes in, unfortunately, no, it isn't, it isn't popular to do, and I'm sorry to say, but it's also, I'd rather see a humane thing done instead of a cat starving to death and having 17 dozen litters of cats that are starving to death. They just come in and have to take care of it, because the people just drop their cats and when they go to another base, and so they have to come in and take care of the cat population, because just like trappers say, it does, they, they kill the birds, and then they kill the other, the ferals, they keep, the cat bites and they're diseased. So, I think it's, if we can, you know, put a little bit more on the column, and maybe, you know, maybe having the one big thing to have to take care of this mess that we have.
I just want to reiterate Mr. Matthews' comment on feeding them. You can't, I mean, they're feeding them on your sidewalks. You should be able to do something about that immediately, so.
Lake and Sullivan for the record, I just wanted to remind you guys that we haven't finalized the budget yet, so we, there still is time if you wanted to add any additional funds for something like this.
Well, then, we probably should set it for next meeting then, so we can discuss that, and then that would allow for the people that have reached out to the meeting to speak about it as well.
I think the concern with that is, is we can set all the funds aside we want, but what are we going to actually do with them? Right? I mean, we can catch them, we can spay them, but what, the problem still exists, the numbers are there, and, you know, Mr. Matthews hit the nail on the head, the places these cats are located are where they're being fed. And that's something that we need to figure out how to address, but without having anything with teeth on it.
Well, maybe we could set something up for the agenda to discuss that, and then possibly setting an ordinance to cover some of those issues, just making a very good thing so we can talk and spitball and maybe come up with something solid. Is that possible? Do something like that? Okay, no more, I'm going to move on. We're going to go to, we're going to jump to 1.12, because it kind of deals with the same thing, and then we'll come back to cover 1.11. So, 1.12 for discussion of possible action, for suggestion on code enforcement regarding weeds, junk on properties, et cetera, throughout Nander County.
So, Commissioner, this is what we've come up with, is this how our ordinance works right, or how our process works right now on enforcement of, you know, we've had some different terms used, but for properties that are, or eyesores more or less. We get a formal complaint from... We get a formal complaint from a, from a resident, that our, usually goes to the clerk's office. Our building department goes out, inspects, makes sure that that is truly an ordinance violation. We cite the code and send a certified letter. If the certified letter isn't picked up, we give it to the sheriff's office to serve. At that point, once it's served, they have thirty days to comply and start reaching out for compliance. If they thumb their nose at us, this is where, this is where the, the rubber has to meet the road from the DA's office, and I'm not sure exactly the, the relationship between the sheriff's office and the DA's office at that point. But by the code, the DA's office can then start fining, up to even confiscating property, having the county go and clean it up, backcharge the property owner. But that's kind of where the rubber meets the road and, and where there's kind of some hangups. Nobody really wants to tell somebody else what to do on their property. But that's, that's where it is. To this point, on the official complaints that we've got, we've had pretty good compliance. We did, years ago, when our past building official was here, we issued a whole bunch of letters down La Mer and Carshent Road, and we had a very small proportion of them, of them complaints actually addressed and fixed. But that comes back to, you know, the enforcement that is above our office, and is all we're doing is citing the, the code and passing, passing the buck along. I'm not saying that to pass the buck on to either, either of these departments, but that's, that's where we stand. The reason we went to official complaints is because people want you to drive around and call everything out, well, you can't, we don't have the, we don't have the bandwidth to do that, for one. And for two, then you start getting the complaints of selective enforcement. So, if we get, if we get an official complaint, we don't lodge that to anybody and say, hey, so-and-so complained on you. If they call and say who complained on us, we say, you know, you've got to go through the public records request through the clerk's office, and to obtain that information, we leave it at that simple. Because we aren't trying to pit neighbors against neighbors. So that's kind of the layout of how that works.
Yes, sir.
John Davis. Sorry, I couldn't quite hear in the background, but so where do you get the public, or the complaint form, at which department do you go to?
Building Department. And I can get some here and we can start handing them out, we can have some print off real quick and hand them out to anybody that'd like them.
Well, I would like some, now that I, I do know the, the course. And then, at what point do I, I, I fill a complaint out? How long before I fill another one complaint out because it doesn't get, nothing's getting done?
Well, if, if it.
I know that one's slow.
No, 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 if it goes through the process like it should, if we do our part, and we get, we get, we go through and we cite all the code violations, and we issue that letter, and it's actually picked up at the post office within three to five days, then it's thirty days from then, they have to, from the time they pick up that letter, to comply.
Okay.
And if they don't comply within that time, then we kick it off to these, these departments, and, and I think mainly the DA's department. And that's where then, like I said, that's where the rubber meets the road, if they, if they don't then start following the further steps.
So forty-five days down the road, if you will, round number, nothing's getting done, I go see that gentleman and ask him why he's not doing anything about it, is that correct?
That would be, that would be my understanding correct.
And then where do I go if he doesn't do anything about it?
To the next election polls.
Okay.
I mean, that's, sorry, that's the best.
Alright, no, I appreciate the answer.
And the serving, you know, that's, nobody really, like I said, that's, that's another, we have to have the sheriff's department supporting this, a lot of these people are fairly savvy on not picking up certified letters.
For sure.
So when, when they see that and they're, and they're down here at the post office, they go, no, you go ahead and keep that, and, and that's where we need Robert's deputies to, you know, they can actually pull somebody over if they see them on public and serve them. They have a little bit more teeth there, and I think that Robert and his team, I don't think that they're going to have a problem doing that, but I can't speak for that.
Okay, alright, I appreciate that, thanks, Commissioner.
Robert, Robert Cook, the sheriff's office. Bert's quite correct, we have no issue serving any papers the county's requesting us to serve on an individual. And just our understanding and reading of the nuisance ordinance is it's a civil issue. At this point, there's, to my knowledge, there's no criminal part in that ordinance.
Yes, so I, so to that, yes, there are a couple where the sheriff's office is actually directly involved, and that's where there's drugs, drug reported on the property. And there's another crime type of, of issue where the sheriff's office actually then does address the complaint directly.
It's an offshoot of, of the nuisance ordinance that's related to a crime. But the nuisance itself, my understanding is it's a civil issue. So it could be something we wanted to update in our ordinance, right? If need be.
If need be, and.
I mean, I think maybe just that if we can work what we have available, the complaint is, is filed and then it's served, like you said, most people are willing to comply, they're willing to do something about it. It might not, it might not even be an issue, you know?
Yeah, I think if, if I remember, there were eighteen served over here, and there were six compliances. As of recent, Ms. April back here is, is pretty strong with her language, so we've had better compliance, but it, it isn't always as successful as we want it to be.
I, we beat up the cars enough, how about the weed problems? I go around, you see yards, last year's weeds are six foot tall in their yard.
Yep, we have to, we, we just take, if somebody gives us a complaint, we will go file, the one thing about weeds is, sometimes if people are growing herbs, if they're, there's other plants that don't qualify as weeds that some people may consider, right? Some of these people will put these in the front yard, so we have to actually go identify the plant and make sure that, that it's a legit complaint.
What actually qualifies as a weed is anything that's growing that's unwanted. So there's a weed. Okay, so any other questions, public comment? Yes, ma'am.
Carrie Stewart. I'm so excited about this, that you're finally addressing this, because weeds become fire hazard. And we have a property behind our house that no one lives on, and for years we've either sprayed or mowed behind it, because I'm afraid if some little accidentally kid, somebody starts a fire back there, it's going to, you know, would burn down on my property. But also I would like to address cars that are not licensed on streets, that is a violation of a county ordinance that is not addressed in Landor County. I know of a car that a young man died three years ago in this county, and his abandoned vehicle is still sitting on a street. Those need to be taken care of, and that should be something that the sheriff's department, when they're driving around and they see something that doesn't have an up-to-date tag, they can ticket that. And that should be able to be taken care of. Also, people who have trailers and travel trailers and things, those are a safety concern for me with, I have grandchildren, and there are lots of little kids who play on our streets. And people park those on the streets, and those kids zip in and out of them, and you come around a corner and a kid comes out. They need to be parked elsewhere, not parked permanently on your street. And I would like to see those issues addressed also, and there are ordinances about those being a safety hazard, those are, those are on the books in Landor County. So I would like to see those addressed as well.
So to pick you back off what Carrie's saying, is that, is, so would that fall under the same thing with like any ordinance, right? You sign the complaint, and then we basically give it, and we notify these people if it's actually against the ordinance?
Correct.
So if you have some concerns, Carrie, that would be the thing, is get the documents there, and you can, you can issue the complaint, and then our building department will go, will basically do what they can do and see if we get it cleaned up?
Yeah, very excited to hear that you guys are.
And complaint, just everybody knows in complaints, it doesn't matter where they come from, we'll address them, right? If it violates the ordinance, but we don't drive around looking for them, and I'm sure just much like the sheriff's office doesn't as well. Because a lot of times neighbors don't have an issue with each other's things, you know, it's not, not a problem. So, we don't go, go beat on doors for that, but the minute, the minute we get a complaint, we're, we'll do everything within our departments to make that happen, and then, and then like say to actually put teeth on it.
Yeah, but I'm pretty sure that nobody's noticed that across from one of the schools, that there's a line of cars that have been there for years, just saying.
And to the cars, I know if they're licensed and registered, correct me if I'm wrong, Robert, that there is no, nothing that can be done with them parked on the street?
There are not.
Robert Cook, the sheriff's office, correct. If they're not licensed, then we can tag them and tell them, once we give proper notice, as well as the camp trailers, which there is a current ordinance that doesn't fall under the nuisance, that we can deal with that. I just wanted to point out that April has been very good, when she gets complaints, she does carbon copy me those complaints, so I can look at them and see if they're something that we can address. And then we would go ahead and address those as well, besides the building department.
Also, I'd like to chime in, the sheriff's office has enforced that on cars in the past. I've seen that personally done. So, if it didn't happen someplace, it's because either somebody's not complaining, or there's something about it. Perhaps the car is licensed, you have to, you know, check the actual tag, and people have been known to keep either tags off their cars. That is, if we get to put one on when they renew them.
Okay, alright, well, I think we know the direction we're going with this, so there's no more public comment, yes, sir.
Lamont Edgar for the record. Just a quick comment regarding, I guess we need to get our, our complaints out there, and sometimes people, you know, they, they don't want to, you know, do paperwork formally, complain, but when you go on the county's website and you click on the citizen's concern request, you click on that link and it takes you to some other page that doesn't exist. Maybe we could look at the, the website, I mean, there's, there's a few things that aren't working on there, there's people that are no longer working for the county on that website. I think probably one thing that may help us for, for people that, you know, maybe have a hard time speaking, maybe, you know, they can utilize the website a little bit more. Something where, you know, you click on something, and that kind, that website, once you know how to use it, it's, it's, it's okay, but good luck, you, you need to spend some time on it in order to get things to work. But I'm just saying, that, that, that tab, where you click on that, does not work. So you click on citizens' requests, concerns, it takes you to some other page that's not even on Landor County, and it doesn't, it's just a blank. There's a lot of them that are under construction, they show commissioners that aren't even here anymore. So I think we need to do an overhaul on that, and maybe if we could get people talking and communicating a little more, maybe we might be able to get a little more, I mean, we know all the repeat offenders. The county's aware of it, it's, maybe they're doing the best they can, but I think we get more people speaking up, and if you get more people speaking on the same thing, maybe we can get a little more teeth on it, so.
Thank you, I'm glad you brought that up, Lamont, because I have noticed that, and I, so is that something that Nico would do as far as, as far as updating our website, or?
Liz deals with that more than I do, IT would definitely help us, but I believe there are two websites, one under construction and one that is operational. But I'd have, Liz would have to speak on that, because I'm.
It says, welcome to the city of Landor County.
Yeah, it's always said that.
Yeah, so, um, we will, let me, let me do some research on this, I'm not very familiar with the website side of this.
This is a simple fix, we can just go fix that link.
Okay, yeah, we'll, we'll report back on that one, sorry, guys, but thank you for pointing that out, because I don't ever get off.
Citizens' requests, who live in concerns, you know, it's, it's, yeah, we need to get the, the system working, but who's monitoring that, who's, you know, who's, does anybody give feedback to the people who are reporting? I think, I think we started a little better communication.
Right, that was a good point.
This is minor, but I think we're getting it off the, turned up item, and we're going to.
Yeah, okay, thank you, yeah, thank you for that. So there's no more public comment on the item that we're on, we're going to move on to the next, actually, we're going to probably take a break here. Or not break, we'll break for lunch. Is that good for you guys, or you want to keep going at it?
We don't have that much left to do, do we?
Let me see here. You guys want to keep going at it?
No.
Okay, we'll keep going. So we're going to move into item 1.11 for discussion of possible action to approve, disapprove placement for town transfer station for trash over a refuse within Landor County town boundary. So this was, we put this on here because there's been some, you know, comments about driving out here, and there's a lot of trash, and people don't have the time to pick it up, it's, so, yeah, I think it was burnt, and Commissioner Chopside gave it maybe bring in like a local transfer station where people can dump their trash, they don't have to drive this thing with loads not tarped and things blowing off, it gives them an easy thing, so that's what we're here discussing today.
Are you thinking about like out of Hilltop?
No, so it was, actually where we were thinking is down here at the rodeo grounds, kind of on the backside of there, putting in a transfer station, much like Austin has. It's two hundred and seventy-five dollars every time they dump one of them dumpster stores here locally in Battle Mountain. In Austin, it costs us six hundred dollars per dumpster when they, when they make a trip down there to haul it down near to our landfill. So if we put in a transfer site there, the majority of the trash is blown off when people get out at forty-five miles an hour, you see it alongside of the road, so the thought was to put something here in town. The concerns that go with that are what gets dumped in there. In Austin, we have an oil bin next door to it, so they can dump their used oil in it, we try to kind of maintain what is getting thrown in there. But it's just a, just a thought, our landfill's free, but these people seem to think that it's a lot harder to drive around the corner, pass the landfill and dump things. And we've never turned anybody away since I've been here. If somebody comes in and we, we charge for, you know, demolition, and the contractor set up an account, if somebody shows up at the gate and says, hey, sorry, I don't have the cash, we say, don't worry about it, there's a pile over there, because we don't want it dumped on our public ground anywhere, but it doesn't seem to help much.
What do you guys think? Yes, sir, I'm sorry.
John Davis. I'm not sure where you're looking at putting those burnt. I don't think it's, I don't think it's a bad idea at all, if you can try to encourage them. The other thing that I would encourage is look at your ordinance, and if somebody's caught dumping illegally, increase the penalties. That's within your guys' power, I mean, make it, make it, unincentivize it, I mean, I don't know.
Well, to that, you know, there's, there's a littering ordinance, so if somebody has, if they're driving down the road here and trash blows out of the back of their truck, they can be, they can be cited if they don't pull over and pick it up.
Correct.
But you've got to enforce it. If somebody gets a thousand dollar fine, I, they stop down here at the local hardware store and they grab themselves a tarp for the next load.
Correct.
You know, so, and, and I don't say that trying to, you know, be disrespectful to our sheriff's department, these guys are loaded, and if you look at our sheriff's department, they don't, they don't have a ton of staff. And Robert has that radio hooked to his hip, if he had it on during these meetings, you guys would hear, they're, they're ticking. You know, now, when they aren't ticking, there's room for some of that stuff to happen.
And it's, I mean, it's an education, they, if, if that is happening, they can stop them, and they can educate them on them, hey, you can, next time, I will, they don't have to write them a ticket, but they can certainly educate them. On please, I mean, we all live here, we want the community, I mean, the cats, the, the junk cars, the trash, the weeds, we all live here, this community has been nothing but great to me, I have been blessed to live here and be a part of this community. I just want the best for everybody that's here, and I want it to look the best that it can look. Everybody has financial woes, they might not be able to afford it, there's, there's avenues out there. I mean, just, there's got to be a way to, to get the community up to par, so that when we drive in, you're not saying the first thing's out of your mouth, saying, what a dump. And in some areas, that's what it looks like. So I, I just, but the, the transfer stations, you obviously don't want your waste oil, they're going to have to go to the landfill to get rid of that, you don't want waste oil sitting at different locations, I wouldn't think, because it becomes a problem to manage internally for, for the county. So, but as far as a dumpster, or two, even possibly the hilltop area, somebody mentioned? In, in town proper, if you will, maybe there's a couple of sites that you look, look at.
You could do too, if you do it, you do something similar, you put like a camera, you put a sign, no dumping of oil, right? If caught, twenty-five hundred dollar fine, you know, you have a camera right there, a little sign says, smile at your own camera. I mean, it might eliminate some of the dumping of oil, you know?
We have some big totes, is that they're called, out there, and everybody is really good about dumping their oil into that, we have, really don't have any trouble out there, and we have. And we have another one that's cut open and you can put all batteries and stuff in there and and your paint, there's a pallet there, if you have paint, you put it on there. And everybody's pretty respectful about it in Austin, Kingston.
Sorry, Commissioner, but those hazardous materials should be kept confined to one spot, not spread out throughout the county. I mean, your regular household trash debris, s- small debris, uh, that I can see, but the, as far as the hazardous waste, if you will, needs to be confined at one spot, you have the spot, the landfill's there, it's free, it's free.
But if you have a bin, they're gonna throw it in there so they don't have to travel it.
And that's, I'm with Commissioner Sparks, they can be, but, uh, somebody's talked about monitoring it, somebody has to monitor it, right? That's, that's the worst part about that. If there's a problem, then you got X amount of hours of footage that you gotta dig through to try to figure out who that culprit was.
You know, down in Austin, um, every winter we have a couple of dumpsters start on fire because somebody dumps their ashes in that they thought were old, you know, and and I can see some similar, similar things happening here, you know, it's just, it's just what it, what it is, we have a few at the landfill probably every year, you know, um, we have equipment that we cover it up quickly and no big deal. Um, but, you know, we're doing the community cleanup, I live here, I love the place, I'm not going anywhere, my feet are buried in the soil, I I love it, I don't, I, it's, and I want it to be nice, I want everybody that drives in here goes, man, the county cares about this place and their people. Um, you know, when we do the community cleanup, if somebody calls and says, hey, you know, I've just physically, you know, my back hurts and I can't get this, this pile off my, Donnie and myself, we've gone out there, take a look at it, we'll run the back, go in there, pick it up for them, get it off there, clean up their property for them, no problem. You know, we try to help anywhere we can help, it's, but it, it's gotta be a dance, the the other half has to dance with you.
Correct.
And, you know, we'll continue doing our community cleanup, um, if we can put dumpsters somewhere to help, it, that'll help, but the, the trash blown out, you know, going down the road here, pull over and pick up your trash, like-
Correct.
It, to to even have this discussion here, kinda, it's frustrating when, when we're trying, like, we've been trying for the last eight, nine years, we've done the community cleanup, put dumpsters all over, you go out there and the people will push all their stuff off ten feet from the dumpster. Or have a trailer loaded and be trying to jack it up over the edge of the dumpster that they could've went out here to the landfill and just pushed it off and we picked up at the loader. It's, you just gotta shrug your shoulders and go, okay.
I, I don't-
Tom Kirk asks you for the record, that's my whole point of the transfer stations is that there's more stuff dumped on the ground than actually what gets in them. We need to promote the fact that, hey, it's free to go to the dump, uh, we put early voting in the newspaper, uh, we need to promote that the landfill is free and maybe people will utilize it. The people that are actually using the system, dumping their oil in the oil containers, they're putting them in there, they're the ones that are taking it there to start with. The people that don't take it there are the ones that, you know, just throw the trash out anyway, so, I mean, the people that actually utilize the system and and go to the dump, they do a good job, they put it where it's supposed to be, they do what they're required to do, so, but that's my whole point of the transfer station is that more stuff gets dumped on the ground than the county's out there picking it up is compared to just take it to the dump, you already got it loaded up, so.
Okay, well, so maybe that's what we do, just a little PR campaign, just, you know, letting people know, hey, it's free, type of thing, and then if it doesn't work, then maybe we look at strengthening our ordinance a little bit where these people pay or?
Well, back to the, back to the ordinance, it doesn't, we can put everything on the books we want in paper, but if we don't have any teeth to it, it does, it does us no, no good.
Well, maybe you have to catch people doing that, okay? I don't think that's happening and I don't think it's because anybody's in the blood pool, I think it's because if somebody's gonna dump something, they're gonna look around to see whether there's anybody there, so.
Are, are we still recording?
Yeah, we still have phone lines too, so.
Okay.
Yes, sir. Yes, sir.
Um, Lamont Edgar for the record. I agree with, with what Tom said, I, I think we're throwing county money at, at individuals that have bad behaviors and, uh, you know, I started thinking about the feral cats that we had the discussion earlier and, you know, I'm telling you, if you put one of these transfer stations at the rodeo grounds or in that area, you know, if you think we have problems now with feral cats, wait till we put a dump closer to town, uh, you know, it's, that's, that is a concern, but, um, the, the people at the, at the landfill, if you guys have ever, anybody that's ever interacted with them, they're great people, they do a good job, you know, it's, uh, you know, the, it's, it's a small group of people that we're have, well, now we're talking about a monitoring list and monitor, you know, we're trying to throw, you know, money at, at bad behavior and I think we just need to, you know, it's hard to catch these people, but, you know, we need to report them if someone's littering or sometimes people don't even know they're doing it, they're, they're just taking off, but I, I would like to, you know, if, if a, a transfer station is, you know, something to be considered, think about the feral cats too and where it's being, because I own two properties north of town, you know, and if a dump is close by, you know, I've, I've been fighting the feral cats myself and it's, it would just be more, a lot more of an issue than it is now, so, I think.
Thank you.
Okay, if there's no more public comments, and would, uh, what do you guys wanna do on it?
I'd, I'd rather just see us promoting the dump and then if somebody needs help, that they can contact, maybe like you were saying, if somebody isn't able to clean up their yard and that they need help, that they contact the county, maybe possibly, I mean, I don't know if that's something, you know?
Oh, yeah, we've always been around.
So, yeah, I mean, maybe we publicize that, you know, the, and to please clean up your trash, because, yes, it still blew up the other day and it was people from out of town actually that stopped alongside the road and were picking it up, um, it wasn't even there, I mean, they were in a call, in close car that were picking it up, um, so, I mean, maybe we just try to promote that if that's what we can and see where we get, I think with that, we'd feed money further ahead, do we not? And if they need help, to contact us.
Okay. You guys give us that?
I am.
And we'll do a bunch of PR, we'll put it out in our newsletter, try to put something in the newspaper, um, you know, what can hurt?
Yeah, I agree.
Okay, great. We'll move on to one point one three for discussion of possible actions to approve disapproved engineering services proposal for water system improvements at well six water treatment plant, uh, treated water storage tank in an amount not to exceed a hundred and sixty-four thousand dollars. What do you guys, afternoon I should say?
Good morning. Yeah, afternoon. Yeah, this is for the contract of day engineering for, uh, which one were we on?
Tank.
Oh, yeah, the tank, for the water tank over there on well six, with the bottom, the bottom rusted out of.
So which sink is that, Donnie?
That's that big, uh, is that two million gallons, two million gallon water tank?
Right off the freeway.
Right off the freeway, one that has a big sign, Merrell painted on it.
Yeah, exactly. I think we talked about this a few months ago.
Yeah.
The condition where the divers go down or?
No, no, no.
You didn't go there?
No, we tried filling it up and, uh, it just ran out the bottom after, it was holding water, what, six months earlier, yeah.
Yeah. Okay. Commissioner, have any questions?
No.
Okay, public comment or concern on it? Okay, I'll hear a motion.
I'll make a motion to approve the engineering services proposal for water system improvements at well number six treatment plant, treated water storage tank in an amount of not to exceed a hundred and sixty-four thousand dollars.
We have a motion and a second, all in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Aye. So dead loose thumbs, thumbs are down, just so you know.
Okay.
Okay, so, I'm gonna move to one point one four for discussion of possible actions to approve disapproved, uh, engineering services proposal for water and sewer system improvements including west main, gravity sewer lift station and forced main replacement in an amount not to exceed four hundred and eighteen thousand.
Again, this for the contract for day engineering, uh, and that's for this, uh, lift station that's right out here for the, basically service, courthouse, uh, jail and then we'll also be, be able to run the sewer over to this community over here.
So basically, this would be new water line, new water main and a, an add, an addition of a gravity sewer lift station, is that what we're looking at? Okay. All right, great. Is there any question?
No.
Okay, public comment, concern? Okay, I'll hear a motion. I'll make a motion that we approve engineering service proposal for water and sewer system improvements including water being, gravity sewer lift station and forced main replacement in an amount not to exceed four hundred and eighteen thousand. We have a motion and a second, all in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Okay, now we'll move to one-
Any questions?
Yep, we'll move to one point one five, review consideration of possible action on parcel map number two four zero zero one four filed by Ricardo and Shannon Bruman to combine APN zero zero two dash two three oh dash one one, zero zero two dash two three oh dash one three and zero zero two dash two three oh dash one four into one twenty-seven point five one nine Spurwick parcel with an R one single family residence zoning district. The subject properties are located on the north side of West Humboldt Street, approximately fifty-three feet west of the intersection of West Humboldt Street and Stone Avenue, seven fifteen, seven thirty-five and seven forty-five, West Humboldt Street, Bottom Mountain Avenue, eight nine eight two oh. This was approved at the April seventeenth, two thousand twenty-four planning commission meeting with the following condition, one parcel map to be reported with Lander County's reporter's office within one year of approval by the Lander County Board of Commissioners. Hi, guys.
Hi. Good morning, Commissioners, Shelby Knapp, planning coordinator for the record. Um, so the Brumans here just wanna combine some parcels, uh, over here on West Humboldt Street, uh, the planning commission did approve the parcel map with the condition listed and they had no other concerns.
Okay. The commissioner have any questions, concerns, public comment on it? Okay, I'll hear a motion.